Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this City Council meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order on this Monday, May 20th, 2024. Thank you for joining us here in the council chambers. Thanks for everybody watching online. We have the honor tonight of having the colors posted by the Bloomington Honor Guard. If you would please stand and welcome the Bloomington Honor Guard.
Officers, come to attention. Officers, present arms. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United Kingdom, to the Constitution of the United Nations, to the Constitution of the United States. Officers, order arms.
Thank you all, you may be seated. Once again, thanks and welcome to everyone, and thank you very much to the Bloomington Honor Guard. It's always a great way to start a meeting, to have them present the colors and post the colors for us, and great to see them this evening. And the reason why they are here will be evident very soon here. First order of business tonight, council, is we need to approve our agenda. Our agenda this evening, we have, under introductory items, we have four items. We have the swearing-in of our new Bloomington police officers and the introduction of our civilian staff members, introduction of new employees in the Public Works Department. We have two proclamations this week for Public Works Week and for MECFS Day here in Minnesota. Under our consent business, Councilmember Muah has consent this evening, and we have nineteen items under the consent agenda, or excuse me, twenty items on the consent agenda this evening. Under our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we have six items. We have public hearings, five of those items, so we've got a public hearing regarding a resolution to approve the issuance of conduit revenue bonds for the benefit of 700 American. We've got a public hearing at the 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation, our CAPR report. Item 4.3 is a public hearing regarding the Minnesota Dede Small Cities Development Program, CDBG program. Item 4.4 is a public hearing on city code amendments for speed limits. 4.5 is a public hearing regarding adoption of a speed limit map. And item 4.6, we've got a resolution in front of us for budget adjustments to transfer strategic priorities funds for the Traffic Injury Reduction Plan. Under our organizational business, we have four items. Item 5.1 is the report and the results of the transportation-related greenhouse gas emissions and analysis. Item 5.2 is our sanitary sewer capacity update and funding options, we'll be having that discussion. Item 5.3, a pro forma analysis for the ROSA development, and we will wrap up our evening as we always do. Item 5.4, the City Council Policy and Issue Update. Council, is there any, are there any corrections or additions to our agenda? If not, I would move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and second by Councilmember Lohman to accept tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda. Very good, and our first item of the agenda is item 2.1, the swearing-in of Bloomington police officers and the introduction of our civilian staff members. Chief Hodges, are you going to do the honors of introducing folks?
So I'm gonna bring them up one by one, mayor, city council, and then after that, we'll do the official swearing-in. So first, I'd like to start off with Officer Miller. You have a nice little script up here for you.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Angela Miller. I grew up in Bloomington, Minnesota here. I received my associate's degree at Normandale Community College, and prior to working here, I was a cadet for Bloomington for a year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll bring up Officer Sanders.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Mitchell Sanders. I grew up in Maplewood, Minnesota. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Metro State and an associate's degree in law enforcement from Centry College. Prior to getting promoted, I was also a cadet with Angie for a year and a half. Thank you.
Welcome, thanks for being here this evening.
All right, next, we got Officer Burt.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name's Andrew Burt. I grew up in the city of Rosemont, got a bachelor's degree from the university of Mankato, and prior to working here, I was working for the city of Woodbury as a police officer. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Next, we got Officer Hanson.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Kip Hanson. I grew up in Mankato, Minnesota. I went to Rasmussen University, where I graduated with associates in law enforcement, and prior to working here, I worked over four years as a police officer with the city of Rosemont. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Next is Officer Anderson.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Joshua Anderson. I grew up in Prior Lake, Minnesota. I have an associate's in emergency medical services from Inver Hills and an associate's in law enforcement from Hennepin Tech. Prior to working here, I worked since 2012 at Alina Health as a paramedic.
Welcome.
All right, so we'll do the oath office for the police officers, and then after that, I'll bring up the civilians. And I'm just reminding the mayor and the council and the citizens that when I became chief, one of the things I changed was I don't bring people before you that are not fully fledged police officers. Other agencies will have these big academy ceremonies, and then half those people fail FTO or don't make it. Every single person that comes here is a fully fledged Bloomington police officer that's working the street. So they are on your streets right now. So I just want to remind people of that change, so that's why we don't have these that frequently. So with that, officers, please raise your right hand.
Chief, if I could slow your roll just a minute there. To all the family and friends who are here, this is going to happen once, so don't be shy. If you want to take a picture, please get up, get in behind, wherever you need to get to get the best shot for, for the person that you want the picture of. That's right, scoot on over just a little bit. You can, you can leave your seats, you can come on up here.
Oh, don't, let me get out the way.
All right, and chief, if you want to go ahead, and again, you can stay in the position, it's always best when the hands are raised, when the hands are raised, so.
So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, and actually say your name, don't like say state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties as a police officer for the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations. All right, now you got to go through and shake everybody.
And before we, before we shake everybody's hands, hold on, hold on one second, I want to, I want to congratulate you all, and thank you very much for being here. Chief, congratulations, it looks like another outstanding group of new officers. It's great to hear, two of you came through the cadet program, that's wonderful, because I know it's, it's a, a way to recruit and, and fill our police department in a, in a non-traditional or a little bit different way, so I'm very glad to see that happen. All of you, I know you've heard, I know you've heard the speech from, from the chief about the expectations and what all comes with joining the best police department in the state of Minnesota, and so I won't repeat it here, but I just want to say I look forward to seeing you on the streets, looking forward to working with you, and congratulations on your appointment and your swearing-in as Bloomington police officers. Well done.
This looks like the Congo line over here. All right, so next, we'll bring up the civilians, our cadets, and as Officer Miller and Officer Sanders said, they were the, part of the first cadet program that we did here in Bloomington. The cadet program has really helped our department maintain our staffing, and obviously, as one of the larger departments in the state, we're not only fully staffed, we're overstaffed, and I don't think a lot of agencies, well, I don't know of anybody else that can say that, and part of that is because of this program that we have here, this cadet program is one of the pieces to that. So with that, I'll bring up Cadet Bashy. So you got to read the same thing.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Carter Bashy. I grew up in Kansas City, Missouri, and I'm currently going to Metropolitan State University. And my previous employment was, I was a truck driver, doesn't sound fun, but it was fun to me. Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, next, Cadet Hague, whose name is the same as our conference room upstairs, so. Are you related?
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Kyle Hague. I grew up in Prior Lake, Minnesota. I have a four-year bachelor's degree in business from Concordia St. Paul, and I'm currently in skills at Rasmussen University. And then before this, I worked at Ernie Rose Golf. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, next, we're going to bring up Bo Nino.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Bo Nino, I'm from Wausau, Wisconsin, and right now, I'm currently going to Centry in White Bear for my law enforcement degree, and before this, I was a construction carpenter. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, welcome.
So you guys don't get off the hook like that either, you got to come up here and shake some hands, too. So you're, you guys got family here, they can take pictures of you guys, too. Well, save it when you pass FTOs, officers, then.
Well, I will say, cadets, welcome aboard, thank you for your service, and I know it's, it's going to be an interesting journey for you, and I, and I hope you, you learn what you need to learn, not only to be a police officer, but for yourselves as well. And it's an important step that you're taking, and we're very glad to have you here in the city of Bloomington. Welcome.
All right, and I'll just close our ceremony with this. I just want to thank the mayor and the city council for your continued support. Understand how important that is to allowing us to continue to not only hire the best people, but as you can see, our police officers back here are the very best at what they do, and I believe they're the very best in the country. And I got matrices that really can show that. So not only getting the best, but actually allowing the best to, to work here. Understand me when I tell you, again, I'm not going to get too much in my political statements, but in this county, to be able to be this staffed is a testament to the leadership of the city. So welcome to Bloomington, continue to have fun, and we'll see you guys over there in that reception room over there. So, thank you.
And I want to say thank you again to the chief and congratulate you and the entire command staff for the outstanding leadership that you show within the police department, and thank you all so very much. I know, family, as much as you all want to stay here for the rest of our council meeting, I know you probably want to get to that reception, so I'll let you all do that, and certainly understand, we will take a pause in our proceedings here while you head on out. But thank you all for being here as well. It's great that you're here and supporting your, your people. Well done. Captain, good to see you, thank you for being here tonight. I haven't seen you in a long while, great to see you. All right, now we've got some, now we've got some elbow room here, very good. And we will move on with our agenda. Council, and thanks for your, your greetings of our new officers and our new cadets, that I know is, is appreciated by them. Item 2.2 on our agenda is the introduction of new employees, and I see Julie Long coming forward to make the introduction for us. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council, it's my pleasure to introduce John Camper to you. He is going to be employed as an engineering technician in the engineering division. He grew up in Dakota County and got his associate's degree in land surveying and civil engineering from the Dakota County Technical College. For the last three years, he's worked for a private consulting firm, but we encouraged him to come over to the public side, and he had fond memories of an internship at the city of St. Paul, so we're excited to have him.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say, I've been here just short of about six months, and it's been an absolutely wonderful experience. I've learned so many things, and this summer, I'll be working on the, the overlay, the mill and overlay, and yeah, thank you all very much.
Thanks for being here. Good, good to have you onboard and hope to see more of you, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, next up on the agenda are two proclamations, so I'm going to head down to the podium and do the proclamations from there. As I said, we've got two proclamations this week, and it was, the first is for Public Works Week, which we celebrate every year here in the city of Bloomington, and then I'll do it nationally. I generally invite folks up who are here to, to celebrate with this. Carly, you want to come up, or others from the Public Works Department? Oh, very good. I want you to just come around behind me, please, and, good to see you, and.
Derek Cable?
Derek, they didn't give me your name, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You said you wanted to see John again soon, so.
Exactly. This is a proclamation for Public Works Week, May 19th through the 24th, 2024. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, park maintenance, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 24th, 2024, as Public Works Week in the city of Bloomington, and I call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life dated this 20th day of May 2024. I, I really enjoy this week because it's, it really does call out a very important part of our city government that I don't think ever gets enough attention and enough credit for the work that they do. If not for our public works folks, this would be an entirely different world. If you couldn't get out of your driveway, driveway after a snowstorm, or if the, the parks were not taken care of, or if the drinking water didn't taste as great as it does, it's an entirely different world without our public works department and our outstanding public works department. So it is my honor to, to, to present this proclamation, to present it to our public works employees, and to turn the microphone over to anyone, please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick introduction, I'm Derek Cable. I've been across the street in our public works building, working for the engineering department for the past seventeen years. I primarily work in our water resources group with maintaining and improving our storm sewer infrastructure. You've all met John. That being said, John and I would like to provide a brief statement on behalf of Bloomington's public work staff. We believe public works impacts Bloomington residents' daily lives in a positive way, from our street maintenance department, who maintains our network of streets, our engineering department, who works to maintain and improve our municipal infrastructure, lakes and ponds, and the safety of the traveling public, to our utility department, who provides safe drinking water and maintains our sanitary sewer system, and all the support staff that works behind the scenes to help implement and improve our services. That being said, it's, it's that time of year where you start to see more and more of us out and about on construction and maintenance projects throughout the city. It's a good time to remind everyone to please slow down as you pass through these construction sites or maintenance operations. We don't always have a lot of room to work with, and we all want to return home to our families safe at the end of the day. Thank you for acknowledging the importance of our work with this proclamation.
And thank you for the safety PSA, just really quick in there, that's really good, so well done. So I'm going to present this to you, do we have anybody to take a picture? All right, oh, Julie's going to come up, let's step over here. We'll get the official picture, I'm going to let you hold it in the middle there. It's called the grip and grin, you'll get used to them, John. Thank you, thank you very much, thanks for being here. Our second proclamation this evening is actually for a day that was a couple of weeks ago, it was May 10th. It was Minnesota, okay, I've been working on this pronunciation all day. I had it, I had it. Thank you, encephalomyelitis, very good, thank you so very much. Sarah, are you here, Sarah Utter, are you, yes, please, come on up, and I apologize for butchering. I, again, I've been working on it all day, and I'm disappointed in myself.
It's hard.
I'm disappointed in myself, so. It's Minnesota encephalomyelitis, it's ME Chronic Fatigue Syndrome Day, May 10th, 2024. So this was a couple of weeks ago, but we wanted to make sure that we doubled back and proclaim this day because it's an important day. Whereas ME is commonly, and as it's commonly known, and also chronic fatigue syndrome, CFS, or MECFS, is a devastating multi-system disease that causes dysfunction of the neurological, immune, endocrine, and energy metabolism systems. And whereas, this incapacitating disease is characterized by severe exacerbation of symptoms following any form of exertion, and is understood to be an inability to properly generate energy within cells, having at least 25% of, leaving at least 25% of patients home or bed bound. And whereas, MECFS affects an estimated one to two and a half million American children and adults of all ages, races, income levels, and geographic areas, costing our economy between eighteen and twenty-four billion dollars annually in direct medical costs, and this includes up to forty thousand people in Minnesota living with us, many of whom live in Bloomington, costing our state economy upwards of seven hundred million dollars and also costing our city economy. And whereas, people with ME-CFS have lower quality of life measurements than any other disease tested, including multiple sclerosis, late-stage AIDS, and chemotherapy cancer treatments, and there is no diagnostic test, no FDA-approved treatment, and no cure. And whereas, this number is ever increasing, both as more people contract MECFS in Minnesota, including through those who have now been diagnosed with it through long COVID, an umbrella term encompassing several different infection association diseases included MECFS, MCAS, POTS, and other forms of dicytol... Help me with that one, too?
Dysautonomia.
Dysautonomia, thank you, thank you. I worked on this all day, I worked on this. And whereas, on this day around the world, and on this day was May 10th of this year, there were, there were hundreds of global virtual and in-person events to help bring greater awareness of this debilitating nature of this illness, and the need for more resources to fund research for a cure and create stronger medical professional awareness. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim May 10th, 2023, as MECFS Awareness Day in Bloomington, and commend its observers to all citizens and encourage doctors and schools to raise awareness about this illness to make a healthier Bloomington, Minnesota, and America dated this 20th day of May 2024. So Sarah Utter is here with us this evening, thank you so very much, and thank you for the assist, and I apologize once again for my, you know, I, there's a reason why I didn't go to medical school, among other, many, many reasons, but appreciate the fact that you're here and willing to, to bring this forward, and I know that there was a, this I think the first, is the first time we've offered this proclamation here in the city of Bloomington, is correct?
That's right.
I'm going to turn the microphone over to you, if you have anything you would like to say.
Thank you so much, this means a lot to me and to my community. We have been living in a world where we have no doctors who receive us, nobody's educated on it, there's no funding for research, and now long COVID has happened, and sixty percent of people with long COVID are meeting the criteria for MECFS. So it is time, finally, for us as a city, as a state, as a nation, to start looking at post-viral illnesses and finding answers. It's obviously costing a lot of money to help us and to support us, and I think if we could move forward to find a cure, that would be the best, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, and again, appreciate your being here this evening, and apologize for butchering the word, but thank you very much, why don't we get a nice picture here? Do the grip and grin, here, why don't you hold this up? There you go. Next up on our agenda, council, is our consent business, and Councilmember Muah, you have the consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two holds, anyone else? Okay, I have a hold for item 3.6 from Councilmember Nelson, and then a hold from Councilmember Rivas for 3.19. With that, I will move the consent agenda, item 3.1 through 3.5, 3.7 through 3.18, and
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Carter, to accept tonight's consent business as stated by Councilmember Muah. No further council discussion on this. consent business as stated by Councilmember Mu. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item 3.6, you said Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to bring this up very quickly. I will support it because I think it meets all of the rules, but I continue to have concerns about lawful gambling money that leaves the community. And to my understanding, almost if not all of this money leaves the community. I know there's some state law that indicates that as long as it goes into contiguous cities or adjacent cities, that that's okay as well. But still not really thrilled about it that, you know, I'd prefer these types of things stay within the community of Bloomington, at Bloomington places. I'd also just request that the, the organization that's getting this lawful gambling license maybe at least list the locations in Bloomington and promote them as opposed to the ones that aren't in Bloomington that they use because they don't have those, they don't have the Bloomington locations listed on their website. So if they could at least promote our businesses, that would be helpful. With that, I'd move item 3.6.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to accept item 3.6 on tonight's consent business. Council, any further discussion on this? I will say, Councilmember Nelson, I don't disagree with you at all. And we have looked at this and I think it is, it is the rules that we're following. I will, I will point out, I know that there are families here in Bloomington who have kids at St. Thomas Academy. And so it does work. There, there is a connection, but I would agree it's not as of a direct connection is, would be appreciated. I think I would agree with that. Any other council discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Rivas with item 3.19.
Yes, I just, I have learned that the property at Park Avenue has made some proposals to the city. However, I still have some concerns that the parking situation has not been resolved and continues to be an issue. I, I am aware that the city was out there this last Friday as I was also driving around on Friday night. The problem is, is just, it's a, it's a very big problem. The parking situation is just out of, out of control. And my concern also is not only the parking, but also the amount of people that are in the building at one time. I, I'm assuming without having facts on my hands, that they're in violation also of the fire code, of the fire code as well. Because the amount of people in a building at any time that is allowed is a given number. And based on the amount of automobiles in the area and the people that come out of a building at the end of a session, it's just, it's way too large for the building. So those are my concerns. At any point in what I have read so far, nobody's mentioning that those issues are going to be addressed immediately, or that they have plans to take care of them. So with that said, I, I can't support this at this time because I don't see anything. They say that two years to study what they can do to me is that there are immediate concerns, the parking situation and a probable violation of the fire code. To me, that should be mentioned in any of the literature that has been exchanged with the location and the city at the same time. As long as that's not addressed in these issues, I'm sorry, but I can't support this.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Councilmember Rivas. On, on the two issues, I just, I, I would respond in this way. The parking issue obviously has, we've heard about the parking issue. And we know there are a number of, there are a number of cars over there on any given Friday and on any given event day. I think there are two issues. First of all, the, the fact that if they are parked on the streets, they're parked legally because parking is allowed on the streets in all of Bloomington's neighborhoods. I remember early in this process, early in this discussion, we approached the neighborhood and said, do we want to make it a permit-only parking situation in the neighborhood? And the neighbors said, no, that was not what we wanted to do. So if there, if folks are parked legally on the city streets, they're parked legally on the city streets. The other part is, of course, if they're parked illegally on the city streets. And that, I think, is a, is a concern that we definitely need to address. And then I think the third part about parking, and I've had, I've had conversations with, with Darrell Faruk leadership on this, that it's not only, there's parking legally and parking illegally, but there's also being good neighbors and being a considerate neighbor in, in a neighborhood. And I would hope in addition to the legal, the illegal issues, there's issues of consideration that are considered as we move forward. And we do, I, I had, as I said, a conversation that we would sit down and try and work through this and try and figure out a, a better path forward than what we've seen recently. I'd hope you'd be involved in the conversation as well, Councilmember, because I think it would be an important one to have.
What I'm basing is not just in my experience watching the whole situation for several weeks, but also the constant number of emails that if I had had the time to go check it out when they said that people were parking their driveways, that's what I'm concerned about. I, I mean, there's sometimes a lot of people parking our area by my house. I don't mind. As long as they don't park in my driveway and I'm struck my way out. I'm fine with that. That's totally legal to do. What the concern is people parking half of their vehicles onto somebody's driveway. And if they have an emergency and they can't get out of their homes for that, that's putting people in jeopardy unnecessarily. And again, the city, the city, the fire codes, it's, I don't know with certainty, but it's more than what the building to hold the amount of people coming out of there.
And that...
And that's, I've seen it with my own.
And that is something I'll, I'll ask our, our city staff and our fire inspector. I mean, because that's a specific legal issue and that's a, I mean, that's a serious allegation to make. And we'll, we'll bring it forward to our, our fire officials and have them make the determination because they're the ones who have the official say on that. If that's good. I see Councilmember Lohman, Councilmember DeLisandro and then Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. On this particular issue, I want to thank the staff. I know that, and you, Mayor, for working on this particular piece. I think two years is a great period of time to kind of work through some of these and kind of reset the, the dial on this. And I certainly believe we can get some of these things addressed and have the conversation about this. And I think this is an appropriate period of time. I will be supporting this this evening. I think it's the right thing to do. We can have the conversation and, and discuss this over the next two years and kind of get ourselves in, in a, in a place where we want to be, kind of moving forward. And I, I trusted staff and, and the mayor will be able to move forward and get this thing resolved in a way in which that we won't be back here again. Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for not being here for the last meeting where this was discussed, I think, the first time. So if this is redundant, I apologize. I had two questions. The first one being, we're specifically in this particular item talking about the shared use agreement of the existing parking lots, correct? So there's nothing in this language related to either street parking or violations of fire code. Am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I was voting on the right thing. Second question I have is, I know that we had the discussion at one point not that long ago about like doing some additional work over by that area because it is so heavily used on street parking to do things like yellow and red striping on the curbs and other things like that to really help people visually understand where they can and cannot park. And I don't know if traffic engineering is planning to do any of that, but I would recommend that we maybe bring that up again. I find that to be incredibly valuable. In all the cities I've ever lived in, it is very clear. I mean, I know around here, all we say is 30 feet from a stop sign. And it's like, well, I don't know what 30 feet looks like. But if I have a big red stripe that shows the 30 feet I'm not supposed to park, it helps me a lot. And so if we have buffers like five feet on either side of a driveway entrance and other things like that where we can stripe curbs with red or yellow striping and things like that, we might be doing a lot of people a lot of favors around there. So I'd like to throw that out there as a potential thing as we put this on this two-year track. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I had held this last time. Just to have further conversation, was not intending to get into the conversation last time, but that's okay. We started that. And I'm glad we're here. And I think it's led to some productive things. Just for Councilmember DeLisandro, in addition to the parking, it also involves the parks. And that's part of the shared use agreement, just so people in the public are aware that it's, it's both of those parts of it, the sharing of both of those. You know, is two years the right number? I don't know. I mean, I knew 10 years wasn't. You know, and I don't think three, three months is the right number. It's, it's a good enough number. I mean, I could sit up here and nitpick is two years too long or too short or whatever. What I do here and what I have heard consistently is there because of the amount of parking that is available there, it requires on-street parking for some of their events. And that at times that negatively impacts residents because people don't park in accordance with the rules. And I just hope to clean that up. That's all I wanted to bring it up. And, and when I brought it up, the reason that I did was because we don't have a lot of tools. They have a CUP. They, they have the right to exist there. That's all been made, you know, 15 years ago or something like that. And yet we're still talking about it. And so I just saw this as a way to engage in that conversation. And it sounds like that's what happened, that the city and Darrell Faruk and their representatives and their people there are having this conversation and working towards understanding the issues, resolving the issues and recognizing that people can't, they can't park on a street. And they can't park in front of someone's driveway. Let's make sure, you know, we, we make that happen for the people in that neighborhood that have concerns. If there are concerns in terms of capacity, usage and things like that, I actually do believe we already have tools on those. If there are capacity restrictions, the CUP has limitations on the number of users and things of that nature. If those are issues, we have tools to look into that. I don't think that this agreement is the, the mechanism to look into that. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with this. And I very much appreciate the great work staff has done and the representatives of Darrell Faruk and to come forward and work collaboratively on these issues. And, you know, if two years is the agreement that, that they kind of came to in talking about working through these things, I can, I can live with that. I think that's perfectly reasonable. So again, thank you, staff. Thank you to the people in the neighborhood and the folks at Darrell Faruk. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Mu.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to staff for continuing to work on this. Thank you to our neighbors and friends at Darrell Faruk continue to work on this as well. This is very reminiscent, reminiscent of events that I've lived through as a first-generation Hmong American. And my hometown, for the first Hmong church opened and these same issues, same conversations were the issues that were brought up when Hmong congregation moved into our neighborhood. There's lots of cars. There's lots of people who want to worship, worship together. But how we move through and how we built relationships is we opened doors. We let the conversation flow. Because I do understand when it's your house that you live there, it's not just busy on Fridays. It's busy for you because you are there. So I understand the concerns that the neighbors have, but I also know that Darrell Faruk is there and they are neighbors as well. And so having these conversations, continue to talk to each other is how we create community, not destroy it. And so I'm thankful that staff and Darrell Faruk were able to come up with this interim agreement for us. And I know that we'll continue to work and find resolution so that we can continue to grow as a community together. Because when we grow as a community together and share our histories with each other, that's how we can chart our path forward. And Bloomington will be better because we did that.
Councilmember Carter, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to.
Please, Councilmember Carter.
I move to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute an amendment allowing up to a two-year extension of the shared use agreement between the city and property owner of 8201 Park Avenue. City Agreement 2015-284.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Lohman to accept item 3.19 on tonight's consent agenda as stated. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. Thank you very much. Councilmember Mu, thanks for handling our consent agenda this evening. Moving on to our hearings, resolutions and ordinances, item four on our agenda this evening. And item 4.1 is a timed item. This is a public hearing. This is a resolution to approve the issuance of conduit revenue bonds for the benefit of 700 American LLP. Ms. Conami Scholder, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, this item is for a conduit revenue bond for 700 American. Julie Eddington, our bond attorney, is with me. Back in November, the council approved a resolution allowing for submission of an application to Minnesota Management and Budget. And in December, they, or January, they were granted the ability to have bonds issued up to $22,712,250. And over the last six months, numerous items have been before the city council on 700 American project. And this is one of the final ones where the council is asked to allow us to issue the conduit bonds for them. This is a tax exempt revenue bond. This is not a moral obligation of the city of Bloomington. The city of Bloomington is not obligated to make any sort of payments on these bonds. As we issue conduit bonds, we want to make sure that is fully stated. They are basically using our tax exempt status to allow them to issue these bonds. All of their revenues will pay the bonds. So the city is not obligated. So with that, let us know if you have any questions.
Council, any questions on this or on any moral obligations that you might have?
[laughter]
It is. No council discussion on this? All right. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Stand by if you could, please. I will open the public hearing now on item 4.1. This is a public hearing regarding the resolution to approve the issuance of conduit revenue bonds for the benefit of 700 American. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on item 4.1 this evening? Anyone? Ms. Mercer, do we have anybody on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.1?
Mayor, there is not.
Last call for anybody in the chambers. Counsel, nobody on the phone and nobody in the chambers coming forward to speak to item 4.1. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1. Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Mu to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0 closing the public hearing. So counsel, any questions or clarifications on this? We have, we have dealt with these conduit revenue bonds in the past and, and one fairly recently. Does anybody have any questions or do we have any, need any discussion on this?
Can you explain it to me, please?
Councilmember Rivas would like a bit of an explanation for a conduit revenue bond, if you could, please. Ms. Eddington.
Mr. Mayor, city council member Rivas, we do conduit bonds quite a bit in the city of Bloomington. And what happens is the, the IRS code allows cities to be a conduit borrower or conduit for borrowing. In this instance, 700 American is going to be, it has about 22 million in housing allocation. And that's how they can do affordable housing. So they'll use that affordable housing allocation and they're going to have one bond that will be, go out to the, to the universe. And it will be, you know, there'll be bids and then we'll get an interest rate and the final amount of the bonds. Separately and distinctly, they'll also have another piece. It's what we call the 2004B piece. And that's going to be a smaller loan that they're getting from Bridgewater Bank. And that will be done as part of this resolution. It's, it's been approved in the resolution as well. So, and just to, to make it clear, the city has no responsibilities for the bond, except for your audit response. You have to add that to the audit. It's a one-liner in the audit at the back. If there's an event of default, if something happens, not a problem for the city. It has the, the entity, the borrower that's taking on the debt will have to remedy any defaults. If there is an IRS audit or anything like that, we would be able to handle that and the borrower would have to pay for that. So there is minimal risk to the city for conduit bonds.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, just to make sure we're on 700 American, for affordable housing, there are numerous financial layers that we have to help and we do to provide for affordable housing. So this is one of them. The other loan they're going to have, they're also taking a draw from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. They also have tax increment. And, and there's other pieces that are part of the puzzle. So there's... So there's numerous puzzle pieces for affordable housing. And so, this is one of the final pieces.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is the same location that we brought the price down for the land, correct?
Correct. There's a land write-down on it.
So is there still more that the city has to help for the building to be built?
Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, I believe this is the last piece, authorization for the conduit bonds. The land write-down was already approved by council and the Port Authority months ago.
Yes, I recall that. I was part of that. I was just wondering how much more the city is going to invest on the, on that, the construction of that location. Because I know that all this has taken place already, so I was just wondering why the city has to back up the bonds and all that.
They utilize our tax-exempt status because we are a tax-exempt government unit, and that allows them to get their debt at a cheaper interest rate.
Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Nelson, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rivas, any additional questions? Okay. Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to be clear with the public who is watching, because these things can get pretty complicated. We, this is not an investment of the city. This is, we're kind of the intermediary of a loan.
Correct. We're not investing in it, nor is this a debt of the city.
Yeah. So I just want to make that very, very clear for the public, that that's the case. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. Just curious if we know when they plan to start construction, and are they fully committed to moving forward on this? It sounds like they're getting the financing in place. So I'm just, you know, are there any concerns that they might not move forward?
Mr. Mayor?
We have Kenny here, and Kenny might, or the developer is here.
Akasha is here. Okay. Akasha from Schaefer Richardson is here, and she'll speak to us.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, we are ready for construction. It will be contingent on closing, obviously, but we are on track for a mid-June closing. We would start construction shortly thereafter, usually a week or two delay to get documents recorded and then issue the notice to proceed for the contractor.
And I, just piggybacking on Councilmember Nelson's question, there were a variety of financing pieces that went into this, and this is the last piece of the financing puzzle here?
Correct. Yep. The bonds get paired with low-income housing tax credits through Minnesota Housing Finance Authority. And then, obviously, you guys have supported the project through Housing Trust Fund, which was already voted for. The TIF is a part of that Housing Trust Fund repayment. And then there is the land write-down. So those are the final components. And then there is private equity partner as well that will take the tax credits. So these are layered and complicated projects, but we have a full capital stack.
Good. Glad to hear that. Council, any additional questions there? Very good. Thank you very much. So, Council, is there anything additional, any more information we need, any more details on this?
I'm happy to make the most, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dalisandro, that was my next question. Councilmember Dalisandro.
Fantastic. I move to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of multifamily housing revenue notes for the benefit of 700 American LLP, approving a housing program and authorizing the execution of related documents.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Rivas to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of multifamily housing revenue notes for the benefit of 700 American LLP. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, and thank you to our friends at Schaefer Richardson. We're looking forward to seeing that project start. So thanks much for being here this evening. Item 4.2 on our agenda is our second public hearing of the evening. This regarding our, this is our second public hearing to solicit comments on the Program Year 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is a CAEPER. And Kenny Niemeyer, our housing development specialist, is here to fill us in more about this. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. So yes, this item is a kind of a repeat. It's a public hearing for our 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. The reason this item is reappearing is when the public, the initial public hearing for this item was heard in October of 2023, there was not a sufficient number of days given for notice to the public to attend that public hearing. So that was an error due to the definition of working days versus calendar days, which HUD actually defines, and so we have to abide by that. So, so far, can you do that? There's some slides that show the takeaways from the 22 CAEPER, which we can go over if that's helpful. It'll be familiar. It's, there we go. So in terms of sources, there is around 1.5 million, which encompasses carryover from the previous year of CDPG entitlement fund. It includes the allocation for that program year, which is around $460,000. And it also includes program income, which comes in through repayments of loans that go out through our program. So think our homeowner rehab loans. In that year, there was uses of around a million. So we didn't use that full 1.5 for sources, but we, you can see here, a lot, over 50% went back into rehab loans. And then we also had activities related to affordable homeownership, senior services, as well as lead paint remediation and abatement. In terms of demographics, you can see our charts here of who that was serving. All of CDPG funds have to serve low and moderate-income households. And we also take data related to race and ethnicity for those households that are served. And then, just to go over that public comment, so there was no public comments received during the 15-day period from October 6th to October 20th. There was notice given, but that went out on October 5th for the city council meeting on October 16th. So that was not a sufficient period of time. So we have reissued that public hearing notice on May 2nd for tonight's city council public hearing of May 20th. And with that, I think, any questions or?
Council, any questions of Mr. Niemeyer on this? All right. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this back once again. And with that, I will open the public hearing on item 4.2. This is a public hearing on the 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as our CAEPER. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Ms. Mercer, is there anyone on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.2?
Mayor, there is no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Council, seeing no one coming forward, no one's on the phone, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And to be clear here, there's no council action required on this, other than to hold the public hearing. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmembers, city managers, that is correct. We're just opening and closing that public hearing.
Very good. Is there anything else we need to know? Very good. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 4.3, another public hearing. This regarding the Minnesota Deed Small Cities Development Program, CDPG CV Program. And we have with us Natalie Barrett, our Assistant HR Administrator. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members, city manager. I'm also joined by Keely Jackson, Program Specialist 2 for the HRA. We are here to discuss Minnesota Deed Small Cities Development Program, CDPG CV. This is a second public hearing, as required by deed, to close out this agreement and program. To help ground us and provide a little background information, the Community Development Block Grant, CDPG Program, is a federal program that provides funding for housing, community, and economic development. In 1974, Congress passed the Housing and Community Development Act Title I, which authorized the development of the CDPG program. The program administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development consists of two components, a program that provides funding directly to urban entitlement areas, and a small-city development program, which provides funding to non-entitlement jurisdictions. The city of Bloomington is an urban entitlement jurisdiction and is eligible for funds through this program. The state of Minnesota has received a special allocation of CDPG CV funds to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic. The funding is made available from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, through Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, also known as DEED. Small Cities Development Program under CARES Act to respond to the growing effects of this historic public health crisis. DEED is responsible for administering the CDPG CV program. On May 24th, 2021, the city applied for and was awarded $154,430 from the Minnesota Deed Small Cities Development Program, CDPG CV program. The application to DEED required identification of sub-grantees, which was approved by city council with VEIP as food shelf assistance and comunidades latinas unidades en servicio, also known as CLUs, for housing and utility assistance to meet the needs of the community. For housing assistance, $119,780, which was administered by CLUs for low-to-moderate-income eligible households, seniors, and people living with disabilities economically impacted by this COVID-19, to make rent payments, mortgage assistance, and utility payments. And then for food shelf assistance, $34,650, which was administered by volunteers enlisted to assist people, also known as VEIP, for food shelf, to increase access to food and deliver support for low-to-moderate-income individuals, seniors, people living with disabilities, and those economically impacted by the pandemic and inability to access nutritional foods. The city council adopted Resolution 202192 to participate in the Minnesota Deed Small Cities Development Program, CDPG CV. And then the HRA staff administered the program as it aligns with priorities and process with the city's annual CDPG allocation, and then additional CDPG CV program allocation and American Rescue Plan Act funds. And so, some of our outcomes, VEIP expended $31,500 in programmatic funds and $3,150 in administrative funds to serve over 14,000 persons. This was the full expectation. Over 80% of those served were low-to-moderate income, which is considered less than 30% AMI to 80% AMI. CLUs expended $3,319.15 in programmatic funds and $1,296.84 in administrative funds to serve two households. That was less than the full expectation of 35 households encompassing rental, mortgage, and utility assistance. Both households were below 30% AMI, which is extremely low income. The reason we were not able to meet the goal of 35 households was the issue was with the environmental review record requirement for housing assistance. This issue was identified early in the process of implementation after we were awarded funds and signed the grant agreement with Minnesota Deed. Our instruction from DEED was to keep moving forward with the required process, as it is a requirement that is employed for all grantees, and DEED was not able to change the process just for one grantee. We were not allowed to identify a different organization or redirect those funds for other activities, as it would have been a different application or grant agreement. In this program, DEED identified specific categories and eligible activities for grantees to expend the funds for activities related to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. The city of Bloomington was able to use the American Rescue Plan Act funds that was allocated to assist Bloomington low- and moderate-income households with housing assistance with CLUs to assist an additional 36 households. And that was $25,552.68 in programmatic funding and $5,745.81 in administrative funding. The remaining funding was not expended, that was not expended, is not eligible to be redeployed in Bloomington. Our grant agreement ended March 1st, 2024. And additionally, the funding is on a reimbursement basis. DEED did not send us the funding upfront, and we had to submit for repayment, as we were the intermediary between CLUs and VEIP and then Minnesota Deed. We received funding and then sent off. VEIP is still expending Bloomington CDPG funds on eligible housing assistant activities. And with that, I can stand for any questions. There is no further council approval on this item and then the public hearing.
Council questions on this? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Not as much of a question, it's just a comment. I would ask staff to look more into the reality that, you know, we had $100,000, maybe $115,000 in funding to help people in a very difficult time, and we, for whatever reasons, were not able to use it to get that help out there. And frankly, I find that very disappointing. I understand that there were complications, but from what I heard, the DEED told us that they weren't going to change the rules for one community. I assume other communities got grant funding, so I assume that means they were all able to meet those requirements. We had multiple years, this was from a grant in 2001, to figure out and fix that process and figure out how to meet it, and we didn't do that. And that hurt people that could have used help. Furthermore, you know, I don't know how the process works exactly, but could we have canceled that grant and reapplied for a different grant with different partners to do that, if the problem was that the requirements were not something that our current partner could meet? I just, all I'm asking for is people to look into this and figure out what went wrong here, figure out how we prevent that in the future, and if the council could, if at least me, could get a little bit of information back on what outcomes are from that inquiry. Because, I mean, the reality is, is we tried to help those probably most suffering from the pandemic, and we didn't get the job done. And that's on us as much as anybody else. And so, I'm not trying to point fingers or anything like that. I just want to know what happened and how we fix it.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember. I'm assuming staff will be able to follow up and provide you with information for that.
Mayor, I can. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson. I just want to add that all households that did need assistance were able to get assistance. So we didn't turn anyone down. It was just a different funding source that we had to use because of the requirements that came with using the funding with DEED. The major hurdle was through the environmental review process, which the mayor has to wet sign. And if, that is typically a three-day business period timeframe to allow for that. And so, not being able to anticipate the needs or when somebody would call for assistance that they needed, it was hard to make the, make the environmental review get signed prior to the draw request being done, which is why we didn't have an eligible expense. So I just want to add that for the public's awareness as well. I don't know, I know the HRA administrator, Erica Coleman, is also on the line potentially to be able to add to that. I don't know so far if she's there, if there's anything additional she would like to add. But we will continue to look into it as well and see what we can do in the future for funding to make sure we're ahead of those issues.
Councilmember Dalisandro?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I probably, I did, I had interpreted what I had heard a little differently, and so I was going to make a kind of a request for clarification, but I think I have it now. My understanding, based on what I just heard here, is that the problem was with, the problem with using the funds was with the mechanism by which the money had to be moved. It wasn't so much that we didn't have people who could use it, that we didn't want people to be able to use it. It was that by the time somebody would call, the timer would start, and if we didn't get everything signed within that three-day period or something like that, then the thing would just went away. And I think the, it, for me, when, when we have, when we have these kinds of emergency, well, let me just sum up. I don't think that this amount of money compared to all the money we were able to get to people during that time is a lot of money that we left on the table. And so, I do want to put it at in a little bit of a perspective that says, you know, I'd be surprised if this accounts for, what, 1% or 2% of the money that Bloomington and the great staff that we have allocated out through the pandemic, right? And so, we also need to, I think, keep that in a little bit of perspective. This was just one where it didn't, the program didn't get built correctly to make it most useful. And... useful, and that sounds like it's a lot more on DED than it is on any one of us or anyone in the HRA. That's my interpretation. I don't know if that's anybody else's, but that was my takeaway.
Thank you for that input. Others? All right. Thank you for the information and presentation. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing now. Opening the public hearing on item 4.3 regarding the Min-DED Small Cities Development Program, CDBGCV program. Is there anyone here in the council chambers who wishes to speak on item 4.3 this evening? Ms. Mercer, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mayor, we do not have anybody on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Counsel, no one coming forward, no one on the phone. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.3. Motion by Councilmember DeLaSandro, second by Councilmember Rivas to close the public hearing on item 4.3. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. And once again, on this, it was just a matter of a public hearing. There is no further council action that needs to take place on this. This was just a public hearing to receive public feedback with no further action by the City Council. So we will move on from item 4.3. We will move on to item 4.4, which is a public hearing also regarding our city code amendments for our speed limits. And Kirk Roberts, our traffic engineer, is here this evening. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, for the presentation to come up. So here to talk to you tonight, it's the culmination of several, of a couple of years' worth of work that we've been doing on speed limits in the city. Council tasked staff to do a comprehensive review of our programs and services and policies related to neighborhood traffic management and speeds. The work, you'll recall, was completed on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan last year, including the council approving a 25 mile an hour citywide speed limit. We're here tonight to just wrap up the rest of that work, including the city code changes that are needed, adoption of a speed limit map for the larger roadways in the city, and then just approval of the budget for all that effort. So first item up under 4.4 is Chapter 8 of the city code. That's vehicles and traffic. If you haven't read through it, commit it to memory. When the city establishes laws, we have to be consistent with state statute. The authorizing language for speed limits is found in 169.14. That was amended in 2019 to allow cities to do their own speed limits. Prior to that, the state retained all jurisdiction for that. So when you read the code, that's why it references Chapter 169 and the provisions. We have to make sure consistent with that. The first change in the code is to implement the 25 mile an hour citywide speed limit. To do that and to have it be legally enforceable, we've got to post entryway signs at every key entryway into the city, and so that's what you see up here. That's going to add about 75 signs as you enter into Bloomington. The next change in code is to establish, to authorize the city engineer to provide school zones. You'll see language that allows 20 mile an hour school zone speed limits on city roadways. There's a couple ways that we can do that in terms of signage, and I'll talk a little bit more about school zones as I go. The next change in the code is that it enables the city engineer to establish school zones on county roadways by agreement. This is something that's provided under state statute, and Hennepin County is open to those to doing so. And so that's exciting, that's good. They might not be the 20 mile an hour speed limits you see on city streets. There's some statutes that we have to take care of, and so we'll figure those exact speeds out as we go. Same provisions apply. And with that authorizing language, we'll go ahead and start implementing the school zone speed limits. I'm going to touch on a couple things, because the city council made clear last year that 102nd Street was a priority for implementing these 20 mile an hour speed limits. There's similar conditions, and that's an important corridor for that, and we intend to do that. There's a couple other situations that are very similar. There's four-lane roadways around Oak Grove Elementary School over on 106th Street, as well as on 84th Street near Popular Bridge. The conditions are very similar to 102nd Street. They haven't had as much resident concern expressed, but those are significant as well. We were seeking state funding to go ahead and implement these school zones citywide at all of our public and private schools as applicable. We did not receive that state funding. So with that disappointing news, we do intend to advance these three forward, and we're looking at ways that we can pay for that. The cost to implement these is significant. It's much more than just signs. We are advancing that and attempting to, the city engineers working to find budget for that, so we can get those implemented this summer. If we don't have that in hand soon, we'll be back to the council to discuss that issue as well. But our intention is to implement school zone speed limits at these three locations. That's item 4.4, discussion, and the motions in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Counsel, discussion on this, or questions of Mr. Roberts first? Any questions? Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know you said we didn't get the state funding. Is there anything else we're doing to find alternative funding to help support this? I know you identified the three schools as being priority, but I know we have a lot of other schools, so how can we continue to support this and find the funding for it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mua, there's a number of opportunities that we're looking at. We'll continue to pursue the state funding as that becomes available. The other thing is, last week, we submitted a Safe Streets for All application that included a funding ask to update all of our school areas, the plans for those school areas, as well as the speed limits, and we'll keep, we continue to pursue any kind of funding that comes available.
Thank you.
Other questions? Very good. Don't go far, Mr. Roberts, but this is a, item 4.4, this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing now. This is a public hearing regarding city code amendments for speed limits in the city of Bloomington. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on item 4.4 this evening? Good evening.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Brian Savick. I live at 10941 Humboldt. My first question is, what's the purpose of this hearing? What are we to react to? As I assume, I'm assuming that the speed limits decision has been made, and so I'm unclear on what's the public to react to in this particular hearing.
I think what you would be reacting to is a bit in-depth. It's an ordinance, yes. It's a bit in-depth. It's more than the slides that you saw up here this evening.
Right, but we're not.
The ordinance said it was included in the packet with a number of changes and languages.
Right, but reading the resolution and so forth, I'm not seeing what the issue is that we're supposed to address. It seems like you're moving to do this based on a previous decision you've made, so I'm unclear.
If you see in the ordinance, everything underlined is new language.
Okay.
Everything underlined is new.
What might we oppose, not the limits themselves, correct? That decision has been made.
Everything underlined is new language, so including where it sets the speed limits, the speed limit on city street shall be 25 miles per hour, and so on and so forth. All of that, that's all proposed, that's all part of the ordinance that we're talking about tonight.
And that's an open question.
It is, it's part of the ordinance that we're talking about tonight. Am I saying that correctly, Ms. Manderscheid?
Yeah, Mayor members, this is a public hearing on a city code amendment. Essentially, that it is the consideration of new law in the city of Bloomington enacted, if approved tonight, by way of a city code ordinance, which would be codified into our city code.
But we're discussing how it would be codified, not what is being codified, correct?
Ms. Manderscheid.
Mayor members, we're discussing exactly the words that will be codified.
Including the limits themselves?
Ms. Manderscheid.
Mayor members, inasmuch as those limits are in the city code, yes.
Okay. First, let me state my, I totally support public safety in any way possible in terms of protecting pedestrians, vehicle operators, I mean, anybody out there. It's serious, obviously, the consequences can be serious, but I see the city more or less creating its own problems. I mean, basically, the population increased between 2020 and 2021, almost 5% is 4.94, something like that. We're packing the city, even though we know there's no, essentially zero buildable land. So we are increasing the density. We are reducing, on the major thoroughfares, the amount of drivable space. So those two things are loggerheads in terms of you're taking a driving population, giving them less space to operate on the major thoroughfares, many of which go by schools that unfortunately were located on major thoroughfares without any planning of side roads or service roads or something like that to get them separated from these major driveways, but, driving paths. But basically, I'd ask that we think about that when we're talking about going vertical, increasing the population, making Bloomington a place where everybody wants to come to, because, again, you're going to just create your own problems, which I think we have here. And so, like I say, I'm uncertain what I can, what is available for the public to speak against. I'm not against safety, but I am, like, for instance, we closed the service road on 106th Street. All the residents south of 106th Street going by Oak Grove now have to go by Oak Grove. And virtually everyone in that neighborhood was against closing that road, but we still did it. And so those are examples of what I'm talking about. We just don't plan very well. We create a problem, and then, okay, you're going to slow it down. So what are you going to do? You're going to, you're going to have people violating and stuff like that, just because anytime you take a closed system and tighten it up and make, increase the pressure, that's what happens. That's just the natural reaction. So I would urge the council to be thoughtful in what they're doing, and if we're, you know, I don't see why the goal is to make Bloomington bigger. So anyway, I'll rest my comments there, but it does seem we create our own problems. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on item 4.4 this evening? Good evening, Mr. Coleman, welcome.
Hello, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here, I, talking about, yes, my name is Robert Coleman. I'm not going to say exactly where I live, because I feel like that seems weird. But I live in Bloomington. I do not have regular access to a car. I am often, my daily commute to work is walking, both on a street that does not have a sidewalk, and on the sidewalk on a not very busy street, and also on the sidewalk of a very busy street. And I feel like, I've seen a lot of people saying that 25 isn't low enough, and I tend to agree with that, but like, it feels like that decision has already been made, but then it also kind of seems like maybe that decision hasn't, it could be changed. But I think that reducing the speed limit without doing, like, putting up signs, isn't the way that you get people to actually change how fast they're driving, because most people don't really pay attention to that. And the actual, making the, changing the signs without changing the layout of the road or changing, like, making any engineering choices does not seem to have a very, like, I remember in one of the earlier presentations saying that the effects of this might take a while to show their full effect. That really doesn't, if we're going to make the choice, like, we should try to protect people now instead of protect people in 10 years, right? And I think that, like, a lot of people, including me, would want it to go down to 20, and like it is in Minneapolis and in St. Paul. And also the fact that, I would like to know what the cost is for establishing the school zones, why that would be so expensive that we can only do three at the beginning. I remember I was driving with my partner in Lakeville, and on Dodd Boulevard in Lakeville, there is Century Middle School, and I was flabbergasted to see that across the street from the middle school, it was a 50 mile an hour speed limit on a four lanes, a turn lane. There was, you know, the saddest little crosswalk sign, when I can't imagine anyone in Lakeville actually abiding by that, when it's hard to get people to abide by that sign here in Bloomington, you know, when the speed limit is only 30 on some roads, which is, you know, it could be worse, right? But when we're striving for safety, we should be trying to do it effectively. I have, as a pedestrian, I've nearly been hit seven times, I don't know if that number has gone up since the last time I was here, but seven times in the last year on Bloomington streets. And it is, it is really frustrating to see every day people not obeying stop signs going, well, obviously, I can't tell from a pedestrian's perspective whether the people driving past me are going the speed limit, but it doesn't feel like it. I know that there is some police enforcement in here, but it's really, the way that you can convince people, like, passively, like, in terms of like a passive instead of an active enforcement, would be to change the design of the streets. Narrowing the streets will, it has been shown in studies that drivers will perceive that change, and they will drive slower, as opposed to, like, if you imagine a freeway where the lanes are wide and there's a lot of right-of-way, and there's not, you know, cars on either side obstructing views, then people will drive faster, and those same psychological effects are applied to the city streets as well. I think, I mean, obviously, the, changing the floor to 20 instead of the floor being 25 miles an hour is a good idea. Basically, I don't see why any school shouldn't have a school zone by it, right? We have situations where parents don't feel safe letting their kids walk home from school. Like, I went to Oak Grove, Oak Grove Middle. I didn't walk home from school, even though it was, you know, a mile and a half. It's not terrible from my perspective. That's pretty normal. I never, I think I, maybe once in the three years I went to Oak Grove Middle, I ever did that along 106th, especially because that's right where the freeway exit is. Everybody's, you know, they're still in their minds, they're going freeway speeds, and they're going on a residential street. You got to make the engineering choices as well, not just putting up signs and hoping people will abide by it.
Couldn't agree more, Mr. Coleman. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item 4.4 this evening? Ms. Mercer, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak to this?
Mayor, there's no one on the line.
Thank you. Last call for anyone in the council chambers?
This is 4.4?
4.4, yes. Counsel, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.4 this evening.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Mua to close the public hearing on item 4.4 tonight. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. So counsel, questions, discussion on this? I mean, I will kick it off and we'll say, our speakers, I agree with bits and pieces of what they've said, I disagree with what they've said as well on a number of things. I think we have to continue to look at this from a couple of perspectives. First of all, I think we have all heard many times from many people that speed in neighborhoods and on our city streets is a major concern for Bloomington residents, and so I think these are the appropriate steps to take. But I think among those steps are the, I think I first started with four Es, I think it's gone up to six or seven or eight Es now, but it, just the notion that enforcement alone isn't going to do this. It's going to have to be enforcement, it's going to have to be engineering changes on our streets, it's going to have to be education, it's going to have to be the environment that we put forward, it's going to have to be looking at this from an equity perspective. There's so many different ways that we have to look at this, but the bottom line, we have to make it the norm that you don't speed in Bloomington. And it's a challenge, because there are a lot of folks who zip through Bloomington on their way to or from work, or to get to the freeway, or cut through because 494 is such a disaster. It's going to be a challenge, but I think using all the tools we have at our fingertips, we have to work to make it the norm, the expectation. we have to work to make it the norm, the expectation that you drive the speed limit in Bloomington. And it is going to take a while. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to happen tomorrow. We'll, but we're, but I think the, the more we can put our, our resources and our efforts and, um, the, the talents we have here in the city, I mean, and it's not just with our police department. It's not just the engineering department. It's our communication staff. It's, it's all of us. I mean, there's a variety of different things, but there are ways to do this. And I think, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversation in a bit about the funding for all of this. I'm looking forward to the continued conversations that we're going to have as we talk about school zones and how to address this. Um, I, I'm, I'm just, this is something that it's, it's time has come. And I think we've got to put a, a, a strategy together to slow people down in the city. Councilmember Dalisandro and then Councilmember Lowman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, the only thing I didn't notice in the school zone section, um, that we might want to consider, I don't know, is like how big a school zone is in and around, uh, school. Um, I wasn't sure if that was something that we needed to actually add to the ordinance that it's within a hundred feet of a particular thing or whatever, but I didn't see it in here. So I wanted to just throw that out very quickly to see, I don't know, Mr. Roberts, if you have a point of view on that or if there was state statute that required that, that had, that actually has a, a dimension already.
Good question, Mr. Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dalisandro, it is a good question. So the way the state statute reads is that it's adjacent to a school or in an area designated as a school crossing. So for example, uh, you could set up your school zones right along the property lines where the property lines begin and end for school. Or if we have a crossing location, say just down, which we often do in Bloomington, where we have a known crossing area where kids cross and it could be some distance away, we can set that up as a school zone too.
Okay. So it's, it's allowed to be somewhat arbitrary in the sense that, based on placement of the actual school itself.
That's correct, Councilmember Dalisandro. And then, you know, we have studies about the effectiveness and so we don't make it too long. We don't want it too short. So there's a lot that goes into deciding exactly where that school zone.
Okay. All right. Great. Well, that, that's very helpful. So the only other comment I'd make then is, and I'm, I'm very grateful that this is coming. Um, I agree, um, it's, you know, in, in my two tours of duty on the campaign trail, this has been a topic of conversation every single time. I'm excited about the school zone stuff. And I think, um, not to, not to steal any thunder from what we're going to hear about when we start talking about transportation emissions and things like that coming up. One of my favorite topics. Um, thank you, Emma. Uh, but part of the reason why we have the challenges that we do here in Bloomington is because we don't have nodes of commercial enterprise where people can walk and ride their bikes and things of that nature. And so by pulling, pulling people into those centers in those neighborhoods where going 25 miles an hour is not a big deal because not everybody's in their car anymore because they're able to walk to get their coffee or they're able to walk to get to their place of worship, they're able to walk to get their groceries, um, those things also help. So I'd add one more, uh, you know, item to your E's if that's the case. And that is, you know, the, the, the economic development that we need to do within these spaces so that we draw people into those neighborhoods who live there and who want to stay there and be there so that those commuters are on the outskirts of our areas and are not impacting the kids that go to school every day and that kind of thing. So, so we have, we, we, we can take a broader, I agree completely with the idea of taking a broader scope of, of looking at this. Um, and this is a great step in that direction, in my opinion. Um, but I think we have to keep our eye on that, um, you know, more comprehensively. And especially as we start talking about transportation, we'll start talking about how that impacts us from an environmental, um, and climate change perspective. So, um, uh, I'm happy that this is here and I'm excited that we've been able to get this work done. So thank you to staff.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, trying to think of where to start here. I'll, I'll try to keep it to this. Uh, we did have a number of questions, uh, that were, were asked and I, I know that, um, in the, in the pamphlet, there are a number of those questions were answered. Uh, so just want to point some of that out. Just wanted to, to raise a couple that I, I didn't think that were in the, the packet. Um, uh, could we talk a little bit about the cost as to why? I know one of the speakers that were here mentioned, uh, that it's so much more for a school zone. Can, can we briefly kind of talk a little bit more about that in terms of, um, what that may mean or not mean?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, the, uh, so the, the budget that we're asking for doesn't include the school zones. The budget that's going to come up next is part of, um, uh, the subsequent item. In terms of the cost of school zones, um, they, the areas that we're looking at right now are fairly complex from a speeding perspective. You've got Olson and Jefferson along 102nd. That's a half mile of schools just on one city street. And then it's on France Avenue as well for another three quarters, half a mile. If we're going to be effective, we can't just put up signs to do that. We're going to have to look at beacons and some other things to draw attention. You've got a 40 mile an hour speed limit on France Avenue and, and drivers do that 40 miles an hour. As talked about earlier, um, the roads, when they're wide like that, when there's multiple lanes, people tend to drive accordingly. And so to think that we're just going to put some speed limit signs up on the cheap and get a safe school zone, that's not going to happen. And so we're going to have to look at beacons and then we have the associated communication infrastructure and, um, there's just a lot. So I think the short answer to, um, your question is the cost is, is significant because it's complex and because it's public. Um, and so anytime we're dealing with public works or public improvements like that, there, there is some cost there.
Thank you for clarifying. Not my question, certainly, uh, uh, one of the residents' questions. Just want to put that forward. Um, another one, since I've got you here, um, uh, Mayor, is the, um, uh, is sometime back now, the rationale for closing down that frontage road on 106th Street. I certainly have some opinions, but, uh, before I ramble on about my, my own personal opinions about that, um, I wonder if, if there's a, you know, a staff rationale as to why that, that frontage was closed on 106th Street?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, 106th Street in front of the Oak Grove facility, when we studied the interchange, there were two connecting roads, uh, that were very, very close to the interchange. One was, uh, West Bloomington Freeway, which came in on the north side of 102nd Street. And on the south side, there was River Terrace that came in. River Terrace was close enough that it created a conflict with turning movements at the interchange onto the freeway, very busy movement. And so, uh, looking out to the future and maintaining the capacity that we needed on that interchange, the decision was made to close River Terrace. West Bloomington Freeway on the north side is very close to the off ramp for 35W. And one of the key decisions there in closing it was actually the kids walking to school. There's over a hundred kids a day that walk that and they primarily go on the north side of 106 to get to the Oak Grove campus. And so their safety, uh, for the safety of, of the kids walking pedestrians and, and everyone at the interchange, the decision was made to close that as well.
I want to thank you for mentioning that. And I'll just, I'll just say that, uh, when I, uh, went to school there, um, uh, and I do know there were a number of residents that were, uh, very upset about closing that down. Um, I, I do recall that, um, I was here for that. I did vote to support that when I went to school there. One of, one of our teachers were killed, uh, in that intersection. Um, and the safety of the kids that are in that area and our teachers that go through that area, I think are primary, are important to me. Um, and so, uh, I could go on and on about that, but I think we made the right decision at that point in time. And, uh, I continue to support that, uh, that, that policy decision we made at that time. Moving on, um, I did hear, um, some concerns about the density, uh, but I didn't see anything in our policy related to density, um, within, uh, within our city. Uh, so I was a little bit confused by that. I'm not necessarily looking for an answer for that, but I didn't see anything about density, uh, with respect to this particular policy. Uh, someone couldn't infer that, but I, I was a little confused by that. So I don't know how to, how to, how to even answer that. So I'm just going to move right on to my last kind of thing there. Um, just say, you know, I appreciate your statements about the, uh, the, the many different Es, um, that are out there. Um, yeah, it's not easy sometimes to, uh, to get around town. Um, uh, and some folks may, may view it that way if you reduce the, uh, the traffic. But I think what's, uh, important here, um, is that we do focus on this and try to find a way, uh, as we move forward. And, and I've brought this up in the past and I think we ought to consider it at some point in time. And at one point in time, we had merged, uh, our, um, I can't remember what the, the title of it was, but the Streets, uh, uh, Commission back into the Planning Commission. And I think given all of the items that we have here, um, if we're serious about this and we want to, uh, you know, we want to look at equity, we want to look at environmental things. I think that, you know, having a group looking at, you know, these streets on an ongoing basis to kind of move this forward, I don't know if it's a task force or what the new, new piece of item is or a, or a collection of folks off of different commissions to kind of look at this as we move this forward and make recommendations, I think would be a good, good idea to support your, uh, ease of moving around in the, in the city. So again, I think you're, you're, uh, you're a nice way of putting that and communicating that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mua and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I just have more of comments. I know I wasn't as supportive of the 25 mile an hour speed zones. Um, I didn't feel like it would make as big a difference, but another E to add to that is that I've kind of gotten around to it through the evolution of the, the conversations that we've had. The speed limits that we have here are part, are one piece of the active transportation plan that we have and they support the evolution of travel that our residents are shifting to. My kids just started biking this last couple of years. And so we've been biking significantly and over the last couple of months. And I can tell you how terrified I am to cross Old Chocopee because that limits so much of the city to me and my children when we're out trying to explore our city. And not only that, we live on 106th Street. I will never let them go up and down 106th Street because it is right on the road. But I think with this step to create school zones, to lower speed limits in our city that helps us continue to evolve as changing tastes evolve, as people are asking for these things so that we can continue to build out into the future. And so that's, that's where I'm excited, that this is one piece of how we continue to evolve Bloomington. Um, because when I think about when my mother-in-law and father-in-law grew up in here and talking to them about speeding down 106 so they could get over to the hamburger stand or whatever it was, that's what it was. Um, it wasn't meant for people to bike around, it was meant for, for people to drive around. But as we've seen, as younger families have started to move in here and are looking for ways for their children to safely move through our city, um, this is a piece that I think is going to carry a lot of weight, that's going to make our streets safer and keep our children safe.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson, you got an E?
No. I got, I got no Es, sorry. I guess I got cut off here by my colleagues. So just got a couple of quick things. Um, first of all, um, I'd like to thank everyone. We had a tremendous number of public comments in the packet on this, which I think highlights the importance of this issue to the community. Um, not all of them agreeing with everything, but all of them providing good input. And I do want to just thank Mr. Roberts because I think you responded to all of those, uh, emails and gave, uh, good information to people. So, um, very much appreciate that our residents are getting followed up on when they raise concerns about this important issue. Quick question on school zones. Um, the language here says the speed limits for school zones on city streets shall be 20 miles per hour during the days and times displayed on signage, electronic beacons or other traffic control devices. My only question is, I, I know other communities, I know there's a school that I drive past on a fairly regular basis in Lakeville that says when children are present or something like that. Um, so that it, you know, I don't know if that's better or worse, to be honest with you. Maybe it's better just to be 20 during school hours and things like that versus, you know, I have to make a judgment call if a school, if a child is present, you know, because they're in a driveway four houses away from the road. I don't know. But, um, it, did we look at other ways of doing that or is there additional flexibility for that? And the, the reason I bring that up is I know that a number of schools, particularly some of the schools we're talking about here, they have activities on the weekend that aren't necessarily always school. You know, they may be used by youth sports, um, because they have a field there. And, you know, we have a number of shared use agreements with schools to use their fields. And so there may be kids that may chase a ball into a street, uh, or something like that. And so I just want to make sure that we're encompassing everything that we should with these school zones.
Mr. Roberts, comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the, so to answer your question in terms of what devices we're using, it's, it's going to end up being a mix. There are, uh, roadways where that 20 miles an hour when children present is just not going to be effective or it's going to add complexity to the driving task, which is the last thing that we want. We don't want someone driving through a school zone going, is that in effect? What's the calendar? What's the, that's, that's just not going to work. It might work in some cases. We might have, we have a lot of wonderful schools tucked back in neighborhoods where that sign might be effective and all we need. But for France Avenue, for instance, or some of our higher speed county roadways, we're going to need beacons, we're going to need that light flashing when that's present. Uh, the technology allows for that to be programmed up to a year in advance so we can coordinate with the school district, uh, get their schedule, when they're going to have these activities and, and decide when we're going to operate those two. So, yeah, that, we're going to use a wide spectrum of devices to really make it effective school zones.
Fantastic. I appreciate that, um, because that was my assumption. It sounds like our plan is more robust, um, and, and that may work for a small residential street where that's the only traffic. So, thank you. Um, my last question, comment on this entire thing with speed limits, school zones is, this is not the only items we're looking at in terms of traffic, nor the end of our conversations is my understanding. We've, um, stood up the, uh, program for neighborhoods to take a look at it. We heard resident concerns about, you know, um, particular streets and things like that that may be hazardous. So if anyone has concerns, and I know there are concerns, um, actually not too far from Mr. Roberts and, and myself, of neighbors there that are having cut through traffic and that's one of the biggest issues we hear about, what would you recommend they do? Should they contact you? Should they contact me? Um, how do we help them take a look at the programs that we're working on for the neighborhood improvement programs that go beyond just the speed limits?
Councilmember Nelson, that's a really good question. So they're always, uh, citizens are always welcome to call, uh, the engineering department. Uh, we're happy to talk to them and we do follow up on those concerns and questions. The, one of the things that the city council made very clear at the outset of this last year was we need to, in the engineering department, communicate clearly with the public on what programs and services are available to deal with traffic. And so we are working through that right now, uh, on our website. And, and we're working through those issues so that we can present a clear and unified message that people will understand when they're looking for traffic solutions in the city.
Councilmember Ivas.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a, a couple of comments. Uh, one is, uh, it is a great idea to reduce the speed limit. I, I, although it does create other problems, as just yesterday, I was driving down in Portland and I was, I set my cruise control at 34 miles an hour and somebody just flew by me in the middle of the road because they were really annoyed that I was driving at the limit. I mean, uh, and in those instances is when an accident could happen. I mean, and it happens often. I mean, it has happened to me and my concern is though Kennedy High School. Saturday morning, I don't remember where I was heading, but anyway, around 8:30 or so, something was happening in there. It was pretty busy there. Somebody got out of that school, cut right in front of me. They're expecting whoever is driving with the right of way is going to hit the brake. So they came out right of the school, went into the median and then make it your turn to go east on it, on 98th. Uh, to me, you know, I would make a suggestion that we will probably shut down that entrance on 98th, put the entrance on the other side and, uh, it's, it's pretty dangerous. And I'm amazed that we haven't had a major accident in that section there. So I don't want you to forget to add that school to the, to the mess that we already have. Um, but the, bringing the speed limit to 25, I, I mean, 10 miles under 35, it, it allows us another 50 feet to stop, I guess, right? And the reaction in our brain is a lot faster at that speed also. So we can hit the brakes a lot faster than going 35 miles an hour. At least that's the study that I have, uh, read. I mean, so anything in fits that we can stop fast or near on the school or inside the neighborhoods, it's a great thing that we're doing. So I, I thank you so much for all of that. Even though I wasn't part of it, I think it's one of the best ideas that have been put out there. But please don't forget Kennedy High School. It's really bad out there.
Thank you, Councilmember. No, thank you, Councilmember. Counsel, anything else? Any other comments, questions? If not, we have had our public hearing. Uh, Counsel, I would look for action on item 4.4. Councilmember Dalisandro.
Sorry, folks, I'm standing because I had back surgery last week, so apologies. Um, um, yeah, let's do this. This is fun. I'm excited about this one. Um, I move to adopt the ordinance for the proposed changes to chapter eight of the city code.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Mua, to adopt the ordinance for the proposed changes to chapter eight of the city code. This is related to item 4.4 on our agenda. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you much, Counsel. And in a related item, item 4.5, this is the adoption of a speed limit map. Mr. Roberts.
Councilmembers, um, wait for that PowerPoint to come back up. Can never have too many PowerPoint in your life. Um, let's see, so advancing on the next item, the official speed limit map, one of the changes to the code.
Standby.
Mayor members, there's a resolution directing summary publication as well in the packet.
I, I've.
Motion sheet?
I apologize, I don't have that on the motion sheet, so I missed it. So I, uh, my apologies there. Uh, we need a motion for summary publication of item 4. We need a motion for summary publication of item 4.4.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Mua for summary publication of item 4.4. No further counsel discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0, as Councilmember Delisandro has stepped away. Did we forget anything else, Ms. Manderscheid? We're good. Thank you for catching that for us. Back to you, Mr. Roberts.
Next up, speed limits on larger roadways. So, once the council made the decision last year to go with the 25 mile an hour posted, or 25 mile an hour speed limit as the default citywide speed limit, staffs began looking at speed limits on the larger roadways. These would be your collectors and arterials where we actually go ahead and sign for the speed limit, whereas the local streets are unsigned, it's a citywide ordinance. What we are proposing is a set of speed limits, 25 miles an hour on what we're calling sort of our park service roads, or our regional recreation roads, up to 35 miles an hour posted on some of our larger arterial streets. The bulk of our system is collectors, and that, those would get 30 miles an hour posted. This map has been posted on the Let's Talk Bloomington page since last year. There was a bit of correspondence, which was included in the council packet, as you alluded to earlier. Tonight, seeking formal adoption of the official speed limits map, this map is, the, the actual official map is an electronic copy in our city's GIS system, so it won't be a scroll that you have to roll out when you come to the engineering department, but it will be available for public inspection upon request. Adopting the map, beyond that... Yeah, it's not. So the next steps upon adoption of that map are, we have to add about 400 signs in the city to our inventory of about 16,000 signs citywide, that's about 500 staff hours. Those sign plans are ready to go, and we'll start implementing those upon adoption tonight. The first step that will take place is a citywide ordinance, so we've got the county on board, we'll have them post the signs up on their streets, and these will be the entryway signs to establish the 25 mile an hour speed limit. Those are the next, back one if you could, or maybe I can. I can't. Back one more. Outreach and engagement, this is something that we are adding. Engineering staff work hard, and we, we do really good technical work. We're not always the best at communication. We've got basic eye contact down, but beyond that, we struggle. So what we're looking for is the help of a consultant. As the council has touched on several times tonight, this is a comprehensive set of changes to manage speed in the city. And one of the things we need to do is communicate to that, to the public, communicate our expectations about speeds in the city, and we're looking for some consultant help with that. I, in addition to practicing here, I also live in the city, and, and in talking to people, people love Bloomington, they love where they live. And I'm hopeful that we can find a consultant to help us appeal to that sense of community, and as it pertains to people's driving, and get that message out, as well as the school zones, if this school yard comes about in the, in the fall, to help us really engage with the community. So we're looking for, to put a consultant on board. One thing that came up as I was preparing this packet was the state, the legislature has, this is just an aside, but they have passed some legislation that will mandate that the, the state, Minnesota Department of Transportation, actually review our speed limits. So as soon as this gets approved by council, it will go under review by the state, and that's fine, I welcome that. I think the language is interesting, says the report must identify affected cities and recommend upward adjustments based on observations in the report. So we'll see how that turns out, but I welcome the state's review of our speed limits, and I think we'll, we'll do just fine, and we'll certainly save the paperwork. Next up, awareness strategies, we've been working with the police to think about how we raise awareness. We talked about educating the public about new speed limits. We're also employing strategies that aim to provide real-time feedback. We are asking for funds to, to purchase two more speed trailers. These are speed trailers that the police spend the summers out rolling around the city in various locations where there's problems. They're pretty effective, and they're well-regarded by the public. We'd like a couple more of those, and would like to add them to school zones and other problem locations. I already talked about the consultant, the help that we need, and the police will be doing some enforcement work over the summer months and into the, into the fall, that they've sought and gained money to help with that work, and that will come to you as a separate item, not tonight, so that's how we intend to go about awareness. We could advance one more. That's what I have on that, so in the night, tonight I'm asking you to adopt the official speed limits map, which is essentially adopting the, the proposed speed limits, posted speed limits from 25 up to 35 miles an hour on the map as shown.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Roberts? Councilmember Delisandro.
No, no questions. Could we put the map back up, just so as we do the public hearing? Is there?
Oh, sure, yeah. As we do the public hearing, certainly. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question. So, it's my understanding that there was legislation moving forward this year around traffic cameras, or speed cameras, I think it was a pilot program. I have absolutely no idea with how the session ended, if it passed or not. And again, I know it's a pilot to then test to see if it would roll out, want to be rolled out statewide. Do you have any idea?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, there was a test program, Minneapolis was signed up as one of the cities, there was a county and another jurisdiction, I don't know the final status of that bill. We did not make it into the test program in the draft language in any circumstance, but I'm not certain what the outcome of that bill was. It sounds like the city attorney knows more.
Mayor members, they don't know more, other than that we offered to participate. But I think that, and we provided them with information in order to get us into the bill. But I think that they, I got the sense, based on the jurisdictions that were selected, that they were looking for kind of a chocolate vanilla and a, you know, sherbet or something, they had a combination of different kinds of settings that they were looking for.
Well, I very much appreciate that you tried to get us into the bill, because I was going to say, if we, if it did not pass, we should try to get to the bill in the future. And so, you know, I, when I read through some of the comments that people had sent in, I think there were quite a few around enforcement concerns, which is absolutely a legitimate, a legitimate concern. And I think about, I lived overseas when I was in junior high, and they had speed cameras, and people did not speed, because you would get tickets, and they were substantial. And so if that is something that we could bring to Bloomington in the future, if the state legalizes it, I would be very much on board for that. And then I guess I just wanted to make a comment, I wasn't totally sure if I was going to ask, oh no, I'll save my comments.
Save your comments if you could, please.
And Councilmember Carter.
It's weird having three items that are very similar.
Just as a follow-up on that, the, the safety cameras for speeding are incredibly effective. They showed the, the data behind some of those in terms of crash reduction and injury prevention is, is significant, there's not much, that's, I've never seen anything that's more effective than that. So yeah, definitely supportive of those kind of changes as we see them moving forward.
Counsel, any additional questions of Mr. Roberts on the presentation, the speed limit maps? Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the pieces of the map that we chatted about last time was just consistency across the, the streets. Did anything get changed with the map that we, we chatted about to, to maintain that consistency?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mua, the only change over the draft map is 82nd Street between Portland Avenue and Nicolet Avenue. This is, if you think about it, as you pass by the Toro headquarters, 82nd Street, that was originally proposed as an unsigned roadway. In looking at that, there's, there's enough industrial and other uses there that that is going to be maintained at 30 miles an hour. So that's the blue line at the upper top of the map between Lyndale and Portland, was at 1.25, it will be 30 until we can do some traffic management work to make that work differently.
Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we look at 102nd Street and 106th Street, you know, obviously there are parks that are on those streets, and I know that, you know, there are some service roads that are there, or, you know, you've got the old, old Cedar Avenue piece that goes to the bridge, and then also down to the, to the dock piece of that. Just curious, for those folks who live and see, you know, live in those areas, and see that as being a destination area, why those, because I know there was an interest in trying to move that to 25 miles per hour, and I know there are rationales behind why we didn't do that on 102nd Street and 106th Street, and so I wanted to just see if, you know, if, if we could readdress that, you know, given the, you know, given that there are, you know, there are parks that, that people do attend and go there.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, can you clarify again, which streets were you?
102nd, well, let's start with 106th Street, obviously there's Moore Park that's down there, there's a, you know, the entranceway down that way, and then also on 102nd Street, we've got that other park right there. And, you know, we have some of these other areas here, and I guess, I mean, I kind of think I already know the answer to this, as to why we wouldn't designate those, but we look at, you know, Old Cedar Avenue down to the bridge, that's kind of leading us to, you know, Old Cedar Avenue, and then also Lyndale Avenue there, we have that, that red kind of taking it down, that additional five miles an hour. Obviously, there's, there's schools on that, that zone too, but there are also parks on both of those, and, and why not bring it down to 25 around those parks?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, it's a good question now, and I understand it well enough. The, and I'll start with the reasons we posted, the, the roads we did at 25, or we're proposing those at 25 miles an hour. So you're heading down Lower Lyndale, you've passed 106th Street, and you're heading down to the River Valley, that's strictly a recreation destination. You can expect, driving down that road, to see bicyclists and pedestrians right there on the road, either in a bike lane, or, or walking on the road near the path, the same with most of those, as you're heading into those recreational destinations. You're correct that there are parks on 102nd Street, and we always want people to be mindful of that there's bikes and pedestrians nearby, but those are a different context, where, you know, they're probably not actively using the road to get to that recreation destination in the same way that these other 25 mile an hour posted streets are. They fit all the same criteria as the other roadways that are classified as collectors at 30 miles an hour, so that seemed to be the appropriate speed limit for those.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I get it on, you know, with 106th Street, given that, obviously that, I mean, you can see that's, you know, you're collecting and going at 35W. Now, 102nd Street, that's the one where I'm, I'm a little less persuaded.
And you're thinking 102nd Street between which segments, if I might ask?
Well, if you go, you know, essentially if you go right there where, where the, where the park is there, you know, basically, see if I can even read this here, so it looks like it's, yeah, Penn, all the way over to, well, basically, all the way across to Normandale, really.
Yeah, right, great. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, so that road does have schools and, and parks and things like that, as do most of our collector streets. And so again, that they fit all the classifications for a collector road, same context, same design as every other collector road in the city. So I didn't think it, I don't think it would make sense to post those at 25 miles an hour and expect, expect that extra compliance.
Come, I don't know if I agree, but you're the expert, so we'll, we'll definitely go with that.
Counsel, any additional questions on this? All right. Why don't we then open the public hearing on item 4.5? This is a public hearing to adopt our speed limit map, as you see on the screen in, in front of you. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on item 4.5 this evening?
At the risk of beating a dead horse, Brian Saven, just to give you some context to my remarks, our first house was at the end of France Avenue and Overlook Drive. We...
Can I interrupt you for just a second? Si. Could you put the map back up on the screen, please, so we can have it, have it up on the, on the big screen?
Thank you. We left that house after three years, there were three serious accidents with speed limits, there was a right angle turn there, with speeds at above 50 miles an hour. One person hit a tree, pushed the engine in the front seat of their car, another one came from the other direction, there were four grandchildren of a woman that lived on the house on the opposite corner, sleeping in a tent, and had her yard not had a significant hill, those kids would be dead, because they hit the, they hit the hill. So I, I totally understand the need to protect kids, to protect neighborhoods, and again, beating the dead horse, the service road, that took between 250 and 300 housing units, houses, and put the traffic on 106th Street instead of going down that service road. I think there could have been some creative things done where people have huge front yards there, 75, 100-foot setbacks, and I think some things could have been done there. That's, that's beating the dead horse. But all I'm saying is, you put 250 households driving by.
And if, if I could ask, this, this public hearing is regarding the, the speed limit that we're talking about.
No, I understand, I understand, but I'm just...
And you seem to be doubling back.
Again, I'm asking, I'm asking planning and, and consideration, for instance, you're not changing the speed limit on 106th, it's still at 30 miles an hour according to this map. Now, that may be because it's a county road or something like that, all I'm saying is, there's a, there's a street in the middle that you can turn down and only go by half of Oak Grove, but it's a very curvy street, and in my opinion, if you go 30 miles an hour there, which currently you're allowed, now in the future you won't, but point is, it's probably not even safe at 25 miles an hour, because it curves. I don't go down there, but when I turn on, on Humboldt Avenue, I've got people coming from this huge hill down, so they're riding the brakes, then they're speeding up to go up the hill, they pop over the, the top of the hill, and there you are at the stoplight, and you're turning left. Now, in the winter, that gets to be pretty exciting, because you've only got about, I know the city has said we don't have anything that doesn't have 200 feet of visibility, I haven't measured it, but if you got that, you barely got that, and I, I think it's less than that. But all I'm saying is, that, that's unsafe for 250 households unless they go through this curvy street. So I'm, I'm just, in, in one sense, we're lowering the speed limit to get people to slow down, but to me, the, if we're not changing the 30 miles an hour, then we should be enforcing what we do have rather than slowing things down, particularly since I said we're, we're taking a balloon, we're filling it, and then we're squeezing it. And, and so all I'm saying is, please use, well, I'd like, I'd like the, the intersection at 106th and Humboldt to be looked at, because I don't think it's safe. If you're going to turn left there, I don't think that's a real good idea, but I don't like the other alternative either. But those are the things, and, and I wanted to provide the context, because I don't believe in, in being a speed demon, or racing by schools, or anything like that. I'm just trying to give you a context of, the city would not do anything at the end of France Avenue, they still haven't, to my knowledge. Now, maybe there's a speed bump, that's what we wanted, to slow down, because every car that went by was over the speed limit. But we left that house finally, because the city wouldn't do anything, so please understand, I've been frustrated both ways, so, again, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Robert Coleman again. I think if we're gonna, I'm just gonna, if you're okay with this, I'm gonna nitpick the map a little bit. I don't want, I'm not trying to be rude. So, Mr. Mua, I, on Xerxes and 106th, sorry, I'll wait for the timer to start. I, I've had, I've nearly been hit twice at 108th and Xerxes, and I walk on that street, actually 106th and Xerxes, I was nearly hit twice at that intersection, both times at night, when I was walking home from the bus stop. And in both of those instances, in fact, it happened the exact same way, there was a driver coming south on Xerxes, turning left onto 106th, and they, there was, I've, I mean, I've gotten response back about my complaint about the visibility at that exact location, but, not yielding to me even... yielding to me, even though I was already over halfway into the intersection, both times the car came to a screeching halt just a few feet in front of me, um, where I was in the, I was actually in the path of the car if they had not stopped. Um, I think that, uh, when it comes to the fact that, uh, some of these streets, like 106th, even though on paper it might look like, uh, it would be good access for people to walk to Moyer Park or to Oak Grove, I think that it's kind of a chicken in the egg situation where if it's not safe, then people aren't gonna walk there. And I have walked there and I've seen, uh, an, like a couple crossing the street of 106th and being honked at by somebody who was nobody, nowhere near them. Like, he was going too fast and he was nowhere near them, but he still honked at them. Right? That's the kind of, that's the kind of mentality that some of these speeders have. Um, I feel like if, like, there is some of, maybe the, I've heard that, like, freight, if there's on, if that's a, a factor, then it could be higher. I don't see how Humboldt, uh, on the east part of Moyer, I don't see how that would, uh, fit the 30 mile an hour, uh, uh, criteria. Um, in general, I mean, I would, I would hope to see most of them lower. I've said that. Um, but it, it's, it's really, I mean, a lot of these roads are, uh, if they are at 30 and they already are at 30, I don't see how we're going to see much of a difference, right? If there's not actually a change being made, right, on 106th is, I'm pretty sure is currently marked 30? Um, I'm rambling. I'm sorry. Um, yeah. In general, Xerxes, uh, in, you know, the southern Bloomington area, uh, and 106th and Humboldt, those are my main netpicks. Um, they, I think that they should be 25 in this instance.
Anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak on this this evening? Ms., uh, Mercer, is there anyone on the phone?
Mayor, there's no one on the phone.
Counsel, no one in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.5. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.5. Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.5. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Counsel, any comments on 4.5? Any discussion to be had? Councilmember Dalisandro?
No, I, I, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, um, I, I know, the things that people are bringing up, I think are, are great, right? We know that this is not the only thing we're gonna do as it relates to traffic safety. We know we have a fully featured active transportation plan that we're trying to execute on a number of things. Um, this is the first step in a series of steps that we're taking to improve things. You know, we don't have the school zone stuff done today, um, other than in the ordinance. We gotta still get that funded and implemented. I mean, there's lots of things that are gonna happen. Um, we talked about the parks master plan and how we're modifying the way that people can get to and from our parks each time we go in and renovate them, right? So I know that there's discussions about 86th Street in my neighborhood, near Bryant Park, at both Emerson and Bri- and Bryant, uh, avenues to create crossing areas on 86th Street. We need that on 82nd Street for that park as well. And that's true for the other areas that have been mentioned here. So they're, they're gonna keep coming, is my point. And I, I think sometimes because we passed something tonight, people think that, you know, it's gonna be like eight years and we're not gonna keep working on this. But this is, I think, a high priority for this council. And so, um, using the neighborhood-initiated work that, uh, Mr. Roberts mentioned, um, if you have an area, if you're not happy with how things are working on your part of the world, call your city council member and tell them that you want to get one of these neighborhood-initiated things going, and the engineering team will help you do that. Um, it worked very successfully on Louisiana Avenue. It's worked other places. Um, I think we have a traffic circle over, um, now, not that far from, oh, I apologize, Shepherd. I'm gonna go with Shepherd and 96th Street, something like that, right? Because somebody liked that as an idea and that, that, that little neighborhood got together and decided to do it. And then assessment was done and we're good to go. So we've got lots of tools now in our toolbox. And I think, um, this map is just another piece of that puzzle. Um, so I'm excited to support it tonight, and I really appreciate staffs pulling it together. Um, and I know it's not gonna be the last time we talk about traffic around here. Thanks.
It will not. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep this short and sweet. Um, I was planning to say something very similar. So, um, just wanna thank staff. I know when I first started on council in January 2020, I think at that time, my first meeting, I had said, the number one thing I hear about is how frustrated people are with the speed of cars through neighborhoods and on city streets. And so, um, a lot of this work, um, it takes a lot, it's, it's very analytical and it's very detailed. And there's a lot that goes into it behind the scenes that most of us can't even begin to imagine. And so, um, so it takes some time, but we have made a lot of progress. Um, the lowering of speed limits, the neighborhood traffic management plans, so the whole redo of that, the active transportation plan. We've had several significant, um, projects to improve safety at intersections. We've been working on our ADA compliance. We've pushed for safe routes to parks. And so, um, the combination of all of these things, I feel very confident are, are going to improve, um, safety on our roads and people's perceptions and their feelings of safety. And so I am very excited to, to support this. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. Um, one of the comments with regards to France Avenue and Overlook just made me think of something. Um, and I think this is just a clarification for the public. There are different speed limits there now. It's 10 miles per hour at that corner. There's some signs there. I don't know when those were put in. It sounds like it was very unsafe there, as well as a lot of Overlook is already 20 miles per hour based on the meanderingness of that road. I'll describe it that way. None of that changes by this, right? I mean, the base underlying speed limit is that, but if there's unique characteristics, the city apparently has tools to be able to go and put in something specific to that 'cause we've, that's not the only place that we have a weird right angle on a road that we have problems. And we talked at length with a neighborhood where, you know, multiple cars, you know, maybe possibly after having a few drinks somewhere, just drove through the end of it and, you know, kept happening. And so, um, and thankfully those kids weren't, uh, injured or worse. So, um, but just wanted to clarify that those things would remain if there are particular reasons and that gets into the neighborhood programs.
Councilmember Rivas?
I just wanna, like you mentioned earlier, uh, communication. It's basically, um, what, what's missing. A, a lot of the things the city is doing, it's, it's, it's great things, but people are not aware of it out there. So i- if you can find a way to put it out there that is easily accessible, I guess for us, for every one of us here, we, we have the time, we have the tools to access the information. And, and whenever we find the time to read it, we do. Uh, but the public in general don't have the same access that we have. So if there's a way to put it out there, to communicate it to the public, I, it will make things a lot more smooth, so to say. Um, but that said, I mean, I think it's a great idea. Everything that is happening is good for the city. Um, hey, that, that is my opinion. Um, again, I'm gonna, being stated, I'm not here because of myself, just to represent the people that elected me. But that said, this is a great thing that is happening. Most of the people agree that the speed limit should be reduced in a lot of the areas that is being already done. So it's more to come. Like everybody's saying, I'm just eager to see what's coming in the future 'cause I'm willing to put it out there as much as I can also. But again, the communication is lacking and, and if you can do anything possible to put it out there in the easiest way for people to understand it, that would be great. Thank you.
Hugh, Councilmember. Counsel, I think we've all had our say. I would look for action on item 4.5. Councilmember Carter?
I move to adopt the proposed speed limit map.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to adopt the proposed speed limit map as outlined in item 4.5 of our agenda. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And the final piece of this puzzle, item 4.6, this is a resolution for a budget transfer to, or budget adjustment to transfer strategic priorities fund. Julie Long, good evening. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Council, um, we thought a change of personnel might just be interesting since we had three items together. Um, we are proposing, um, just under $300,000 of one-time fees or one-time costs, excuse me, for this. We had worked with, uh, Kari Carlson in our finance department and did some of the budgeting back in 2023. Um, so this is support of one of the BTT traffic injury reduction items. So it's fairly straightforward. Mr. Roberts went over the different, um, items earlier and goes to Councilmember Rivas' explanation that engineers don't, aren't good at communication, and we don't like tuning our own horns, so we need some outside assistance in that. Um, 'cause we do believe that people care about the community. And when you think about it, being my neighbor or my grandchild or whomever, you would slow down for them. But when you're driving somewhere else, you forget that. It just flies out, out of your head. So we wanna help people remember that. And then because we're a little technical, we would also like to, um, change some of the signal timing issues so that when you are platooning down for part of the greenhouse gas, also for just plain frustration as a driver, that if you go the speed limit, it will work with you. If you go something faster, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to stop. So make a better choice. And then it goes into traffic maintenance and police, as we've covered earlier.
Counsel, questions on this? I think, uh, I mean, it, it fits into a number of different E's, the fact that, no, it, it really does. It's not, and it's not just all, uh, writing tickets and so on. That this is an important part of it. And the, the education, I think I agree with Councilmember Rivas, the education, the, um, the awareness, the public awareness to helping to change that culture is just, uh, probably the most important part. Um, I, I, I think the question was brought up and at one point, and, and I would ask, uh, seeing the chief over there, I don't know how much of enforcement, you know, i- if you write a speeding ticket, how much comes back to the city of Bloomington? And if it comes back to the city of Bloomington, how much can we put toward programs like this? And the chief just pointed to Ms. Manderscheid.
I don't know. I don't know the breakdown on the citations in terms of what money goes, but for speeding. I know we get the smallest portion of.
Smallest portion. Yeah, I figured that was probably the case.
So, I think the ticket actually costs us money, to be honest. If someone has to go to court, yeah, it costs us money. But, yeah, I don't know. Do you know?
Uh, Mayor, members, I don't know specifically. Uh, I, I'm curious now, though. Um, I know that there are lots of surcharges, um, added. So the dollar amount of the actual ticket, when you go to pay, uh, is a different dollar amount and quite a bit larger. I also recall that that comes to us in big chunks, um, uh, from the county periodically. So, um, we will look into that and get back to you.
A follow-up would be appreciated. So, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I am curious. Um, I know you answered a question earlier about the cost of the school zones and that depending on the complexity, they just vary. That's what it sounded like, and that we don't have those numbers at this point. And I guess I just, maybe I'm making a comment, you may, you may wanna respond, um, that I at least would be open to considering in our strategic priorities, using some of those funds for school zones, um, if that's possible. Uh, I mean, I was just imagining even if tonight, if there were a couple of schools that were like low-hanging fruit, very easy, in quiet neighborhoods, just put up some signs, like very, you know, simple, like maybe we could just kinda knock those out and have some early wins. And then for these kind of bigger, more complex, that's gonna, that are probably gonna need multiple funding sources, um, you know, kinda move those along down the road. So just some thoughts there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, for the three school zones that we were proposing, we are estimating around $100,000 for those three, um, school zones. Uh, the reason for that, as Mr. Roberts communicated earlier, um, they have, we have the ability to program those, similar to some of our traffic signal, um, systems up to a year. And it has communication that comes back to our office. Um, so that's where some of the cost is, along with the flashing beacons. Um, because all of those streets are on state aid, um, routes, we were going to propose to use our state, internal state aid funds for that route, for those three. But we will be having a funding challenge on some of the other, as you call, low-hanging fruit on the neighborhood streets where that, we can't use that funding there.
Okay.
So, um.
And is that $100,000 for each or total?
Total.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So they're expensive, but they're not crazy expensive.
And do you, are, will you need council approval for that, or will you be able to just move those forward?
Uh, because it's $100,000, I do believe we have to come back to council, um, but we aren't at that point ready tonight to do that. So it will be a separate action, similar to how we spend some of our other, um, construction projects, um, funds.
Do you have any estimated timeline on that?
Uh, uh, for these three schools, Mr. Roberts has committed to getting them ready for, um, school opening in September.
Oh, yay.
And that's what I said, too. Um, so he went public with that, so I'm not outing him. Um, but that's our, that's our goal. Um, so please don't add any more schools to it. Like, let us come up with a plan and bring it back, if you don't mind.
Can you remind the public what three schools?
Um, well, they're not schools per se. So, so for instance, on 102nd, um, that's a half mile. It covers three schools. Um, so it's 102nd, 106th, and 84th.
Okay. Awesome.
So it's more roads and looking at the neighborhood and the roadway.
Okay. Thank you.
Good news. Kurt, you could have shared that. You could have taken the bow for the, to have that done by the start of school year. Oh, I missed it.
I did too. Sorry.
I missed it. There's a lot. There's a lot. Counsel, unless there are other questions, uh, I would look for action on item 4.6 on the screen in front of you.
Would love to do that. Mr. Mayor, if I may? Uh, I move to approve the budget adjustment resolution to transfer $296,025 from the 4,200 Strategic Priorities Fund to the 1,001 General Fund in order to fund, uh, tonight's, uh, Traffic Injury Reduction Plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the budget adjustment resolution as outlined in our packet. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0 as Councilmember Loman has stepped away. Uh, thank you much. Uh, thanks for the, the, the three items, Mr. Roberts, Ms. Long. It was good information and a good discussion and looking forward to moving forward on all this. So, well done. Thank you very much. We will move on to item 5 on our agenda, our organizational business this evening. And we've got three items, uh, counsel, and we're just pushing up to nine o'clock. So take a look at the, uh, the, the time and let's make sure that we get through these in an, uh, expeditious manner here. We'll, we'll start with item 5.1, which is, uh, the results of the transportation-related greenhouse gas emission analysis and report. And Emma Strasser, Sustainability Coordinator, is here with us this evening.
Where's 5.1? Oh, is it just labeled differently? Oh, it's the results. I was looking at 5.12.
There we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Emma Strasser, the city's Sustainability Coordinator. And tonight I'm joined by Ashna Ryanen with SRF Consulting. And we are excited to continue the theme of transportation tonight and share the results of a transportation-related greenhouse gas emissions analysis and report. So before I hand it off to Ash, a little context for why we did this. So we've been really lucky to receive a lot of data around natural gas and electricity to understand our greenhouse gas emissions or pollution from energy. We haven't had that same information from transportation and ground transportation to date. So we've done some great actions like the EV infrastructure plan and, um, the active transportation plan. But if someone six months ago said, Emma, if 10% of the population started driving an EV versus 90%, where is that gonna get to that overall goal that we set back in 2017 to reach carbon neutrality by 2050? And I would say, I don't know. So that's why we hired SRF to help us do some modeling and understand baseline data so that we can not only develop strategies that are based in information, um, that we can go back to and set goals and track and see if we're on pace. As a reminder, about 40% of our greenhouse gas emissions or pollution comes from ground transportation in the city. So we have about. So we have about 60% coming from energy, that's orange on the screen, and then that 40% in the green for transportation, and I'm rounding, so 2% is coming from waste as context. And then tonight, Ash is going to talk about various strategies. I think an important thing to remember is that when we're talking about reducing climate pollution, we're not talking about reducing trips. So right now, if we have six residents in the city and they want to go somewhere, if they have the ability to afford a car and have a driver's license or have access to someone who can drive them around, right now, data shows us that most people are getting around the city with cars or vehicles and they're bringing transportation-related pollution with them that we can see here. The idea that we're talking about is to still have those six residents get to where they need to go, but have more transportation options that have less pollution going with them. So they're getting to where they need to go, but we have less carbon emissions leading towards climate change. So we're reducing greenhouse gas emissions, but at the same time increasing mobility options and accessibility and then also tying that to improve community health. My final slide before I pass it off to Ash. This project was really dipping our toe into this information, so it's purely informational. It was meant to quantify our greenhouse gas emissions from trips starting or ending in Bloomington. Before this, we just had if someone was going from Minneapolis to Burnsville down 35W, not stopping in the city, that was included in count. So now we have an understanding of the residents or people who work here that we have maybe more control over their behavior or influence of how to reduce that pollution, developing different models on how to reach carbon neutrality by 2050 in that goal, better understanding current travel around the community, and then also thinking about potential strategies that we can explore more while developing the climate plan. It was not meant to come forward with specific strategies. So tonight, you won't hear formal recommendations or specific goals to move forward. That's all coming with the climate plan later in about a year. So with that, I will pass it off to Ash.
Thank you, Emma. Again, my name is Ashna Reinen with SRF Consulting Group. Thank you very much for the opportunity to work on this project for the city of Bloomington.
Thanks for being here.
Okay. So here were some of the key project questions we were trying to ask and answer, just to give, as Emma said, policymakers a base on which to build, you know, future planning for city of Bloomington transportation. What is the role of transportation in generating carbon emissions? And how, what other opportunities exist to align with city goals? As we know, we've talked about many other different goals and plans. And so we wanted to make sure that these, this project was done in context of those plans. What pathways exist to reduce transportation-related emissions? And what are the very specific scenarios in which we can, which we can use to get to zero carbon emissions? And the city of Bloomington has a goal of net zero carbon emissions by 2050. What are the areas in which the city can operate and exert influence in reducing emissions? How do people in the city travel and what do they travel for? And what are the specific strategies that can help us achieve those emissions reductions? And what are some of the co-benefits that can come with these strategies? Those are the questions that we tried to ask in this project. And here are the steps that we took between September and May of, September last year and May of this year, starting with understanding with a snapshot of what exists today in the city. We collected data, we built out and modeled these scenarios. We created a framework to create strategies. And then we looked at what specific strategies could be. And then we hope to leave you with a set of next steps that will inform, for example, the climate plan that's coming up here. So first phase one, the two questions we asked, the role of transportation generating carbon emissions and other opportunities to align with city goals as we reduce emissions. So we took a look at a variety of different initiatives, plans, policies, and efforts that the city is making, including the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan, the city's comprehensive plan, the capital investment plan, the energy action plan, efforts by the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, and of course, the active transportation plan, the electric vehicle infrastructure plan. And we also took a look at the zoning code as well. So we found that these were some opportunities we had to align this project with various other goals here, including the net zero carbon goal, environmental sustainability, the work of the racial equity office, public health was a huge piece of this, increasing community amenities, as we've noted that, as we've seen that in the strategic plan, and then making sure Bloomington remains an economically vibrant and inclusive place for everybody. So coming back to where climate pollution comes from within the transportation sector in Bloomington, here you can see a graph from the years of 2015 to 2022. We can see that about 500,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent are produced from the transportation sector. This is from just the surface transportation sector within the city of Bloomington. And you can see that carbon emissions have remained about, you know, somewhat steady over the years with a decline in 2020 when the pandemic first hit. But in 2021 and 2022, we've started to see those emissions creep up again. And so within the transportation sector, where do those emissions come from? We found that 93% of emissions come from single occupancy passenger vehicles. So these are cars and small trucks that we drive. And then the remaining comes from commercial vehicles like larger trucks and the city's transit system as well. And here, I'd like to touch on what's called vehicle miles traveled. This is a measure of how much we drive, typically within a given geographic area, usually within a year. And so the more we drive, the more we emit carbon pollution. And so one way to achieve our climate goal is to reduce the amount we drive in single occupancy vehicles. But that's not to say we're trying to reduce the number of trips that citizens of Bloomington are trying to make. We're simply trying to make sure that people can access all of their destinations through a variety of ways, including many of which are not as polluting as driving in a single occupancy vehicle. So we tried to take a look at where Bloomington is today. And we compared the city of Bloomington with Hennepin County as a whole. We found that the city of Bloomington spends about $13,918. One household spends that in annual transportation costs. The average household has close to two autos per household, 1.83 autos, and then 15,517 miles is driven by the average household. All of this is higher than Hennepin County. We, the city drives about a thousand, spends about $1,000 more in annual transportation costs. The county has, as an average, has 1.71 autos per household. And then we drive about 14,122 miles from a county household. We also took a look at the city's capital investment plan, just to see how the city was spending its transportation funding. Between 2024 and 2033, we're slated to spend about $229.7 million on auto infrastructure, so mostly street projects, and then 27.5 million on bicycle infrastructure and 13.2 million on walking infrastructure. And I do want to caveat by saying, caveat this by saying that a lot of the, within that 229.7 million you're seeing in the auto-centric infrastructure, there are several bike and pad projects included as well, but they're not split up in the CIP. But it is being amended by city staff right now to include those in future additions. So we also took a look at what current infrastructure exists in the city. You can see here that we have 1,029 vehicle center lane miles, 241 miles of sidewalks, 46 miles of bikeable shoulders, 84 miles of multi-use trails. We also have 16 Level 3, these are the high-power charging for electric vehicles stations in the city, 74 Level 2 chargers, 501 active transportation stops, 627 inactive transportation stops, and 37 transit stops with shelters and/or benches. So then we took a look at how people travel. How are the trips that people make contributing to driving in the city? And like I said before, VMT is simply a measure of how much we drive. And so what this graph shows is the, about 50% of all the trips that we make contribute about, I'm sorry. Trips that are less than 15 miles in length contribute about 50% of all the driving that we do. The total VMT is, comes from trips that are less than 15 miles in length. And the remainder of the trips come from, the remainder of VMT comes from trips over 15 miles and, 15 miles in length. And so what that shows us is that a majority of, even though a majority of the trips, we make a large number of trips, the shorter trips don't contribute all that much to total driving. Longer trips are what result in total driving overall. So breaking that down, 9% of total vehicle miles traveled are between one mile, are made, by trips made between one and five miles. 17% are between five and 10 miles. 31% are between 10 and 20 miles. And then 43% of VMT comes from trips that are over 20 miles in length. And so then we took a look at why people travel in the city of Bloomington. And again, these are trips that are just, that are either begin or end within the city of Bloomington city limits. And so you can see here that work trips, home trips, and shopping trips are the biggest reasons that people are traveling. And home trips are just going home from whatever destination that you're at currently. And you can see these bars here, the, you can see those are the trip lengths as well. And so we can see that work trips tend to skew longer. Home trips skew longer as well, while shopping, eating, social, and other activity trips tend to skew shorter. And so major takeaways from our existing conditions analysis is that we have 40% of total carbon emissions coming from the transportation sector in Bloomington, driving in single occupancy vehicles, cars and small trucks make up the majority of those emissions. And transportation emissions have remained steady, unlike energy generation, which have declined, except when the pandemic started in 2020. We find that Bloomington households drive more than the county average and spend more in transportation costs. And we spend the majority of our transportation funding on roadway maintenance and reconstruction. And a few other takeaways from the trip distribution is that 75% of VMT is generated by trips over 10 miles in length. And again, work trips are longer, shopping, eating, social, and school trips are shorter. So the next phase was to model, are there ways for us to get to the net zero goal within the city of Bloomington? And what are those pathways to get there? And so we looked at two major ways in which we could achieve those. And they were electrifying our transportation system and reducing the number of miles that we drive. So we built out four scenarios, and this is how we developed those scenarios, you know, by looking at what publicly available VMT data there was, doing some calculations to, you know, translate one mile driving into greenhouse gas emissions, building those into different scenario models, building a bunch of assumptions into those models, ground truthing those models to make sure that they reflected what other similar entities were doing as well, and then using that as a base to develop strategies for the city to get there as well. So we, again, we modeled a mix of different ways to reach that goal. And like I said, electrification and reducing driving were the two major ways that we looked to see how we could achieve those greenhouse gas reductions. So again, scenarios are based on only addressing trips that start or stop within city of Bloomington limits. So all the pass-through trips that Emma mentioned earlier are not accounted for in this model. And they make up approximately 50% of all trips made within the city of Bloomington. We also looked to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 80%, an absolute reduction of 80% from today. And we developed, developed four scenarios. The first one was a high electrification scenario. What would it, what would it look like if we went all in on electrification? The second one was reducing driving significantly. And the two other scenarios were sort of middle-of-the-road scenarios that looked at a combination of both of these things. So the first scenario, this graph shows what it would be if we didn't do anything. The top line of that graph shows what it would, what would happen if travel continued as per normal. And then with fuel efficiency increases coming online with several, for several reasons, including the, including cars becoming more efficient and the Minnesota Clean Cars Rule, we would see some decrease there. On top of that, we layer on vehicle miles traveled reduction. And here we did a 10% reduction by 2050. And that resulted in us finding that we need to electrify 65% of all new on-road vehicles by 2045. And that would get us to 80% greenhouse gas reductions with 20% being, will have to be taken care of in some other way. Scenario two, we found that we would need, in a high VMT reduction scenario, 40% reduction in VMT by 2050 will require us to electrify 45% of all of our on-road vehicles. And 85%, 85% of all new vehicle sales have to be electric vehicles by 2050. Scenario three, a 30% reduction in VMT, again, this is a middle-of-the-road scenario where we have 55% of all new on-road vehicles and all new vehicle sales electrified by 2050. And finally, scenario four, which is a 20% reduction in VMT, which requires us to have 60% of all new on-road vehicles and all new vehicle sales electrified by 2047. And so what do some of those scenarios look like in real life? So, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, we compared our results with a study that the Minnesota Department of Transportation did, was called Pathways to Decarbonizing Transportation. And we found that our results were very much in line with the DOT found, although the DOT had several other indicators here as well. We only looked at electrification and VMT, while the DOT looked at a bunch of other things, including biofuels. So achieving this carbon reduction goal, we found it requires a multi-pronged approach. There is no single silver bullet. And so all of these strategies have to layer on top of each other. So the more you electrify, the easier it becomes to achieve your target. And then the VMT reduction makes that much more easier as well. And so the rest of this report, we keep scenario four as the basis for recommendations because we found that the 20% VMT reduction was in line with what other cities, like the city of St. Paul and others, are doing. So what do those scenarios look like in real life? For, in 2050, when we say 60% of all on-road vehicles are electric by 2050, what does that mean? So for example, someone who works in an office building, when she parks her car and she walks to her office, she walks by 10 vehicles and she notices that six of them are electric vehicles. Again, this is in 2050, so, you know, quite a ways away. But basically, what this is hoping to show you is that this is not, you know, a radical change. And a lot of this is things that we're doing already. Someone, to achieve that 20% VMT reduction by 2050, all they would need to do is instead of driving to do their weekly grocery shopping, this person can ride an electric cargo bike just twice a month between May and October. So the months when Bloomington is bikeable without snow, for six months, if they drive an electric, ride an electric cargo bike twice a month, they can achieve that 20% VMT reduction goal. And there's other benefits as well. The bike can carry as much groceries as a car can, stores many bags, can go up to 20 miles per hour, and you often don't need to pedal if you have a throttle on your e-bike.
That could be me, I did that starting last month.
So you mean, it is you right now, yeah. Here we go. Another example, we're seeing cities incorporate bus-only lanes and coupling that with transit signal priority, where a bus gets priority on that lane as well as priority at a traffic signal. So if the bus reaches the signal, it would turn green, allowing it to go without stopping. And somebody could discover that using that bus makes it more efficient for them to drop their kids off at daycare instead of driving. And so if they do that just every other day, that can help hit that 20% VMT reduction goal as well. And there's other co-benefits, including saving money on fuel costs. Another scenario is working from home. Someone who goes into the office five days a week today, in 2050, all they need to do is just work from home on one of those days. And at home, they can walk to their neighborhood cafe to grab lunch. And so that is another example of what 20%, 20% reduction by 2050 in VMT could look like. So what can the city do to move some of these goals forward? There, we analyzed, you know, city operations across these, across several categories and came up with this framework to say, you know, where the city may have the greatest influence in helping move transportation sustainability forward. Capital investments, as we saw, we spent significant amount of money of the city budget on transportation. The city is the local decision-maker on how land use happens. And so that is another major area as well. And so that is another major area as well. The, our city streets and roads is the largest source of public land within city limits. And so what our roads look and feel like have a great influence on how people choose to travel. And then the city also sets many different policies, as, as we just saw in the previous section here. And so using those policies to, to move this goal forward. And based off of our trip analysis, we came up with this framework to, to make, to move these, to, to move carbon reduction forward. So these, this framework involves shifting trips, so making it possible to move from your single occupancy vehicle to other less polluting modes like biking, walking, public transit, and active transportation. Avoiding trips, so making it possible to still meet all of your needs, but without having to make the trip itself. Shortening trips, so bringing destinations closer together, so you can reach all the places that you need to go without driving as far, and then providing incentives, so carrots, or, to, to help people make better choices in terms of how they choose to travel. So again, when we look at what those, when we look at shifting modes, those would be best suited for trips that are short. When we look at some of the other modes, such as shifting to transit, shifting to carpooling, those would be best served for between trips that are between 10 miles long and 20 miles long. And then some of the other longer trips can be best addressed by electrifying transportation and things like telehealth and, and working from home. So when I, when we looked at all of those different, you know, the strategies, the plans that the city has been working on, we wanted to, again, make sure that this project was grounded in what the city was already doing. And so we built these themes to develop actual strategies that the city can use if they choose to in the future. And so the first thing was, we wanted to make sure we have increased the access of people to act, increase the ability of people to access city destinations without the use of a private vehicle. We know that equity is a priority for the city, and so mitigating historical harms and bringing equity to marginalized community was a, was incorporated into this project, reducing how much transportation costs for low-income communities. And that kind of goes with the housing piece as well, because we know housing and transportation go together. And so making those decisions in a more coordinated way was important. We know that public health is a major priority for the city, and we know that transportation has a major influence on public health, whether it's what kind of air you breathe, to, you know, the traffic safety conversations we, we just heard earlier, and then eliminating deaths and injuries from traffic crashes as well. So some examples, and again, keep in mind that these are just examples of what other cities have done and some example recommendations that we've made of what, what we can do to shift modes. So right sizing our transportation infrastructure, making sure that our street network reflects the, what it is that we're hoping to achieve, what the outcomes we're hoping to achieve on those streets are, increasing access and frequency of public transit, increasing the safety and comfort of active transportation, and reducing the economic barriers for people to access walking, biking, rolling, and transit. Avoiding trips, these would be things like encouraging transportation demand management strategies like shared mobility, carpooling, free bus passes, and increasing the virtual, increasing virtual access to basic needs, telework, telehealth. Shortening trips, and so here would be where we would build transit-oriented development, encouraging compact development, making sure that many amenities are available close to where you live and work, and then increasing the availability of specialty services, which previously you may have had to cross city lines to get to. And then incentivizing better trip making, so providing free transit passes, for example, making sure parking is being priced in a way that reflects demand, providing safe and convenient parking for bicycles, and subsidizing electric bike purchases. Again, these are all examples of things that the city could do. So beyond this, we also developed specific action steps that the city can take. And those are, will be in the final report, if you're interested in taking a look, they're not part of this presentation today. But those are specific things that go beyond the strategies, would sit within these specific strategy areas. And those are, you know, concrete steps that the city can take to move these goals forward. So with that, I will pass it back to Emma to, to finish this off here.
Sounds great. So one of the things we're keeping in mind is that when an option is safe, when it's convenient, when it's an enjoyable experience, people are more likely to do that. And right now, we recognize that, that tends to be driving for folks. So looking at ways where we can be switching that and make people feel safe, make people enjoy experiences that are outside of single occupancy vehicles, maybe they're carpooling and that's social interactions pleasant too. So, but just thinking beyond what we have thought of in the city to date, putting kind of all of our eggs in one basket of getting around with passenger vehicles and expanding the various options that are available to us to meet those climate goals. And one of the things I love seeing, I happened to be at council for the April 15th meeting, and the leadership program presented that night, and I just smiled when I saw that when they were building their dream city, two of the themes were a Bloomington shuttle and a walkable, bikeable, e-powered community. And it is something that we're hearing more of from residents, especially around options to get around within the city. And that ties so nicely with not only our climate work, but all of the ease that we're being brought up around transportation. So really looking forward to what's next on the horizon. So we've completed this report and study, and now we have more information so we can sit down and have conversations with community and various stakeholders to develop the transportation section of the climate plan. And then it'll be go time while continuing to implement what the city's been doing and have various targets every 10 years to get us to that carbon neutrality at 2050. So with that, we are open for questions. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. That's some good stuff. That's a lot of information there and a lot of good thought went into it, obviously. So thank you for that. See, Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Dallisandro. I've got a couple of questions myself. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is great, and I look forward to seeing the report with all of the recommendations for specific things the city can be doing. I was just curious if you also compared your findings to things that Hennepin County is doing? And I'm thinking about this because the example of getting groceries on a bike, and I think I've said this before, like, I live not very far away from Fresh Time, but I'm not going to bike on Penn, right? Right around American Boulevard. Like, I just, it's, I would not feel safe doing that. And then, so I think about the intersection with Hennepin County and like roads and just things like that, and how we can most effectively make these things actually possible, because they also have a lot of jurisdiction in our, in our city. And so did, did that come up at all?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, we didn't specifically involve Hennepin County in this study. However, we are having side conversations with their climate staff, and they actually recently hired a staff member who's specifically looking at VMT reduction. So conversations have started, and I know engineering staff have had ongoing conversations with the county.
Thank you. I also work five, I live five minutes from work, but that would mean taking France. And so then I'm like, it just doesn't, you know, yeah. It's like, we can dream sometimes, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense because it's not safe or pleasurable or the things that you listed. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, just wanted to point out too, that again, you know, this, this is, these are things that the city can do, but to really achieve, you know, holistic VMT reduction, it'll take collaboration at many different levels, including with the county, with neighboring cities, and the state as well. And I just wanted to point out that the city, that Hennepin County has instituted a 20% VMT reduction goal, and they've developed a bunch of strategies to achieve that goal, as has the state of Minnesota. And we have, we are seeing that there's funding available for several of these projects that can help, you know, put bike lanes on Penn, for example, and in, include, you know, traffic safety designs. So collaboration is really key, and I think that's great that Emma's talking to Hennepin County.
Councilmember Dallisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two quick questions. Thank you for this, this is great. One of my favorite topics. When you mentioned the comparative information of Bloomington versus Hennepin County, I wanted to know whether or not that included Minneapolis, or did we exclude Minneapolis because it would be an outlier in and of itself within the, within the realm of Hennepin County data?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Dallisandro, it did not, it did not exclude Minneapolis, it included Minneapolis.
Okay. I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to see that comparison excluding Minneapolis just because it is such an outlier and they have such a strong public transportation infrastructure compared to most of the first-tier suburbs. So I, I think it might be worth taking a look at that, largely because we could be worse off even, you know, or better, depending on that. So I'd love to see that. And then the second question I had was related to the data you, you mentioned. You, you said something about starting or stopping within the city limits of Bloomington. I'm just curious if the airport, because it's kind of in that weird moment of, could be in Bloomington, maybe, maybe not, depending on where you are, did, do, do we, do we count trips initiating out of MSP as within the city limits as a start or a stop? Do, like, how did we do that? And, or did we give no, could, could we determine that, that MSP was included in those numbers?
MSP was not included.
Was not? So it was excluded from that? Okay. Great. I think that's all the questions that I have. Thank you very much for bringing this up. I, I'm going to point out to my colleagues one more time that 75% of all of our transportation money that we spend is on roads. And you know, I've said from the day I got here, road diets are great. So I'm just gonna throw that out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rivas, and then Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Rivas.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a quick question. I, I'm curious to know how you come to determine the information regarding the percentage of mileage that we travel from within Bloomington to work and back to Bloomington? How is that, how did that data come up to, to be this?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, we used proprietary software called Replica that uses a combination of cell phone data, probes on the road. We pay for that subscription, and so we got that information from that software program. We ran our own analysis, and they helped us run a VMT calculation as well. And so we used those numbers to come up with that information.
Just to follow up on that. So for instance, I drive nine miles to work and nine miles back. How do you determine the percentage of miles that I drive within Bloomington when that is given to you? Obviously, you get it from, not only my phone, but my car also tracks every mile I drive. As you know, every car has, it even tells me how fast somebody passes me when they pass me. So it's kind of wild, but all that information is out there now. So how is that, out of those nine miles, I think, let's see, one, three, but six and a half to seven miles I drive within Bloomington, is that, that accurate? Or the 18 miles that I drive getting to work and back to Bloomington, is that all included? How?
So if your trip started in Bloomington, that whole trip would be counted in the analysis. And if the trip ended in Bloomington, that whole trip would be counted in the analysis.
Okay, so the 18 miles, 18 to 20 miles will be considered. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Lohman.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I, this is my second go at this. And it, it was interesting, first time, and, and, and again, interesting again, the, the second time through, and I, I made a number of comments then. So one of the things that I wanted to bring forward is, you know, in terms of our, how do you see this particular policy? I don't know if this is for you or if this is for Emma, you know, kind of fitting into our ATP and then also the complete streets component of it. Because I just, I look at, you know, this language here, and that the complete street policy, the goal is to develop a balanced transportation system that will enhance safety, health, and livable, livability for users of all ages and abilities, and including pedestrians, transit users, bicyclists, commercial and emergency vehicles, fleet drivers, and on and on and on and on. Hey, it goes on to kind of say that. And I'm just, I'm just curious how that, how this kind of informs it or fits into that, both those policies.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, I would say that this study helps us have quantitative information that's linking a lot of things we're already doing to how to reach the climate goal. So understanding, when I'm talking to my coworkers in engineering, right now, when we're looking at a project, it's unclear of exactly how far that will get us to our climate goal and that relation back to climate change. And this information now, I think, is getting us closer to understanding those different wedges. So if, you know, council passes a climate plan that says, okay, we're gonna do the middle-of-the-road scenario, or we want to see 10% reduction versus 20, that's gonna start to change the way that we look at projects in the future of what are we prioritizing and thinking about, okay, how much are we investing in public EV charging versus bike lanes? All those decisions, I would say, with complete streets, it's more of those individual components and where to invest that this information is helping us get to, if that makes sense.
No, no, I get what you're saying. And I, I guess, you know, as I, you know, look through that information that, you know, that, that we brought forward, it kind of keeps me thinking, hey, how could we revise, you know, those complete streets? Because that's really, may not be our goal anymore, you know, of trying to make this balance. Maybe that's not what we're trying to do, kind of moving forward. Maybe we're trying to do a different type of thing within, within that policy. And also with the alternative transportation plan, maybe it's, you know, the primary, you know, or something. So I just kind of look at that, and I, I'm just, I'm curious about, about, because now as I, as I read that information over and I look at those, those two particular policies, I'm thinking a little bit differently about that. And maybe that's the intent of what you're trying to do by, by putting this data out there. But I, I'm wondering if it makes some sense to, to kind of do a little more digging in there. We're also, you know, looking at our, our speed and that type of thing. And, and so these are, again, all elements and items. I'm interested to, to know, you know, what staff thinks about in terms of moving forward with those. Do we need to revise those items?
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a couple of questions, actually, kind of following up on what Councilmember Dallisandro was asking about in terms of just understanding the data here. And so one of the things that we have in Bloomington is the Mall of America. And it's a national and regional destination and could be the endpoint and start point for many trips. How is that impacting the vehicle miles traveled, particularly in the shopping category? If people come from, you know, anywhere, you know, St. Cloud or something to go to the Mall of America, they went to Bloomington, is that captured, that entire trip from St. Cloud here or from Madison here, or however that works?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers and Councilmember Nelson, yes, that would be captured.
But on the flip side, if somebody, say, came from further away and they flew here, the airline part of that would not be captured. But if they got a cab or a Uber and Lyft, which apparently we still have, that would be captured if the, if they got a Uber or Lyft or whatever, a cab at the airport and then came and stayed at a hotel in Bloomington, that trip, the, the car part would be captured, the airline part would not. Is that accurate?
Ground transportation.
Ground transportation. Vehicle mile traveled, not air mile traveled. And then just something that I've done a great deal in the last few years, and I'm just trying to understand what exactly is captured in this is, you know, I drove to California. I stopped overnight and I kept driving. I've, I've actually driven straight through as well. Does that whole trip get picked up, or does it only get picked up until I stop for a certain amount of time or?
So the, you know, these are models. They're not necessarily capturing every trip that every citizen is making. They, you know, have ways of normalizing these trips to capture what a typical day would look like in the city of Bloomington. And so some of those outlying trips, they have ways of making sure that they don't skew the data in a, in a specific way.
Good. And then that was, I appreciate that answer, because that's what I was trying to get to, is just make sure things weren't skewed there in that way. The, probably the last one I have is, there was an indication that for obvious reasons, traffic to offices dropped off in 2020. I think we all know why. Probably remember that. Yet, we're talking about reducing vehicle miles traveled by reducing those trips to work. And there was a slide that said if we just didn't go And there was a slide that said if we just didn't go one day, it seems to me that the pressure is much more on getting people back into the office again. And so, that seems like that's gonna go against this goal. And it seems more likely in the future, even if maybe one day. But, you know, right now, it might be that you're not going in, you're only going in one day or two days. And in the future, you might go four days and still get that one day off. I just, I feel like the pressure is on that that one is gonna increase because people are gonna want to get back into the office, or businesses are gonna want their employees to come back to the office.
Yeah. Councilmember Nelson, this is, again, like a long-term study where we're looking at what happens. You know, how do we get to this endpoint in 2050? And so, one of the recommendations or example strategies was, you know, thinking of making sure destinations are accessible using a variety of different modes. So that teleworking is one way, but they could still make that trip to the office. For example, if someone chose to come now and live in the city of Bloomington previously, they might have been living in Minneapolis. They then make that trip to Health Partners by bike, for example. And so, that office would still get that trip, but it would not be a vehicle miles traveled. And so there's many different ways in which we can achieve this goal, including teleworking, but, you know, still getting people to offices. That's the goal of the city.
Okay. Thank you for all that clarification. To just real quick last, we're too, very quick.
We gotta move this along.
Okay. You had EV or not EV? What about plug-in hybrid, hydrogen, things like that? Are those part of the mix?
For this study, we just used EVs as a sort of proxy for fuels, I would say. So that section of the graph could be replaced by anything from hydrogen, plug-in hybrids, things like that as well.
And my only last thing is for all the transportation, we talked about the other modes of things. We gotta keep in mind, one of the things that we can control is public safety. And one of the big reasons people aren't taking trains and buses is public safety. And we need to be very mindful of that. Police Department has done great work in Bloomington here. But there are a number of people that I know that don't want to get on a train to go anywhere outside of Bloomington, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council, I'm gonna move us along. We've got a couple of items we've still got to get to yet tonight, and we're getting late. Just want to wrap up. Thank you very much for this information. Like I said, it's great. And to build off on a couple of things that agree completely with the look at this. I love that we look at it from Bloomington's perspective, but we're in a region. And it matters what happens, well, you know, just on the other side of 494 matters as much as what happens inside our city. And there are many circumstances beyond our control. So it's just a tricky one, but this is really good data to work with, and I'm looking forward to seeing them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item 5.2 on our agenda. This is an update on funding options for our sanitary sewer capacity that we have in the city of Bloomington. Sean Lundey from our Port Authority. I've also got Scott Anderson. I've got Glenn Markagard. This is gonna be a cast of thousands. It's gonna be fabulous, I'm sure. Sean's gonna kick us off. Good evening. Thanks for sticking us out this late.
Yeah, it's a little bit past my bedtime right now, so I'm sure you guys are in the same boat. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Sean Lundey. I'm with the Department of Community Development, Special Projects and Initiatives Manager. If only I could be with the Port Authority.
My apologies. I'm sorry.
I'm also here with Glenn Markagard from the Department of Community Development, and Scott Anderson, Utility Superintendent. So we are part of a cross-departmental working group that has been thinking about the issue of sanitary sewer capacity and how to fund that into the future. So tonight, we're here to give you an update on where we are at and what our thinking currently is. So, like I said, we're here to give you an update on the different, the sewer, the future sewer infrastructure development needs and discuss plan next steps. So, just as a quick overview of what we're going to address, because I know everybody's been here for a while, and we want to be short and sweet. So first, we're just gonna kind of give context, short history of the Bloomington sewer system, what our projected sanitary needs are going out into the future, and then discuss where these potential funding sources would come from. We'll give an overview of asset management. But then we will let you know about where some of the friction points are, and then a proposed set of next steps. So at this point, I'm gonna actually hand it over to Scott to dive more into the history and context.
Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Got it. All right. So I'll start with a little bit of background. As you are most likely aware, Bloomington's sanitary sewer system was originally installed and constructed primarily in the 50s, 60s, 70s, and 80s, typically designed to serve the anticipated land use at that time with growth consistent with those land uses. Recent shifts in land use from what could be thought of as typical suburban land use, retail, low-density residential, to higher-density, mixed-use, more compact development, generates significantly more wastewater flow, creating much more demand on the existing sewer infrastructure. This has been seen most recently and most often in our South Loop District, where there have been a lot of conversions of one-story warehouses to hotels, to apartment-residential condos and everything of the like. Those land use changes have necessitated upgrades to not only street, but utility infrastructure as well to support those land use changes. In that district, those improvements have, for the most part, been funded by the South Loop Development Fund or assessments to developers or some type of development agreement. Looking outside of the South Loop District, funding mechanisms aren't as prevalent as in South Loop. And so it becomes a little more challenging on how to fund those improvements. And so that's the crux of the issue, and we'll be presenting that information with some further direction. What we have here are the projected sanitary sewer needs across the city due to land use changes, development, and redevelopment. This represents about $40 million of new or increased infrastructure between now and 2040. And there is no identified funding for this work. So, historically, as I mentioned, local sanitary sewer, when it was installed, was paid for by benefiting properties either through assessments or connection charges. The cost to install regional wastewater conveyance infrastructure owned and operated by the Metropolitan Council is largely paid for through something called a SAC, a Sewer Availability Charge or Sewer Access Charge, collected from developing properties when they connect or when they make changes to their land usage or their property that significantly alters the wastewater flow. Newer upgraded sewer needs due to development in the city have historically been funded through development or the actual project or some other district-wide source. Somewhat separate, the cost of ongoing maintenance, operations, and replacement of existing infrastructure is handled by our wastewater budget, ratepayers, the sewer rates that are charged to our residents and to our commercial and business customers. My council operates the same way. We pay a charge for operation and maintenance for that interceptor line. Last year, it was right around $9 million and encompassed about 60% of our wastewater budget. And again, the cost to expand these systems historically has been funded outside of utility rates. And I think I will turn it over to Glenn for a short period before coming back.
Mr. Markagard.
Good evening. I'm a busy councilmember. I want to talk a little bit about future funding options. And we're not looking for a decision this evening. That will be at a future meeting after we've had public engagement and input. Tonight, you know, it's more about asking questions and just informing the council. But in terms of possible approaches that we could take, certainly, there's the no-action approach. City could use the city SAC fee approach to fund these improvements. We could look at increased utility rates. We could look at alternative sources. We'll talk a little bit about that. Or certainly some combination of all of those items. In terms of geographically, where do we have issues going forward? We have one area that is highly impacted almost immediately. That is the area along 494 between approximately Xerxes Avenue and Lyndale Avenue. In that area, the remaining capacity in the system, all of those pipes flow to one larger pipe, a pinch point. The remaining capacity in that pipe is about 99 SAC units, which is equivalent to 99 dwelling units. So it's an immediate problem. But we also have problems on the horizon in several other areas, including the Normandale Lake area, 98th and Lyndale area, the kind of greater Portland and American area. And then in the South Loop District, we've already had major sanitary sewer upgrades. As Scott mentioned, those have been paid with the South Loop Development Fund or funded by. It's important to note that these areas that are either immediate or near-term constrained areas, they are the areas where we have almost all of our forecast development or at least the vast majority of the development. And that makes sense because these are areas that are close to transit, close to freeways, close to amenities. This is where development wants to be and where development has been in the past, which is why we have the sewer capacity issues today. As I mentioned, one possibility is simply taking no action. If that were to be the city's approach within these constrained areas, assuming that a developer is not able to fund the cost of the improvements themselves, which in many of these areas, the cost is very high, so that would be unlikely. But with that assumption, development would either need to be denied if there were an application or potentially a condition of approval attached to the development that certificate of occupancy could not be issued until Project X was completed. So what we would see is no additional development in those constrained areas once the capacity was reached, at least not development that results in more sewer flow. And most redevelopment does result in more sewer flow than what's there today. So ultimately, under no action, development would divert to other areas in the city or to other cities. And increasingly, that development would occur away from transit, away from freeways, away from amenities, the areas that we want development to occur. Now, the second potential approach is the, what's often referred to as a city SAC fee. And that is an additional charge on new development that many cities use to fund sewer maintenance and expansion. Bloomington does not have a city SAC fee today, which on one hand is very positive for development. It means that development in Bloomington is somewhat cheaper than a lot of cities. But on the other hand, it also means we do not have the funding source for some of these expansions. Sean Lundey did a survey of 78 cities. Forty of those cities responded, and of those 40, 23 charge a fee of some type, and 17 specifically charge a city SAC fee. And those 17 cities are listed in this table. You can see that fees range significantly on the high end, $5,000 per city SAC unit, and that's in Brooklyn Center. And then on the low end, Maplewood, $130. We do have three adjacent cities that we know of that charge the city SAC fee, namely Edina, Savage, and Burnsville. So in terms of figuring out what that city SAC fee could be in Bloomington, the basic methodology is to take the total project cost. Scott mentioned $40 million. Divide that by the projected or forecast number of SAC units. And this is a number that continues to evolve as project costs go up. But that comes to around $2,155 per SAC unit in Bloomington. So a SAC unit is, one SAC unit is equivalent to a single-family household. And then different land uses, that's calculated off that. So what we did is we looked at, what if we had 100% of the costs paid through a city SAC fee? So paid by a development. And then looked at various land uses to see what those fees would be and the impact on project costs. So assuming, again, 100% paid by a developer on a single-family home, if you assume a $450,000 cost, that's probably in the low end, that turns out to be about a little bit below half a percent of the project cost would be that city SAC fee. So that sounds like a low number, but we have projects that are right up against what is affordable or feasible in their pro forma. And that kind of number could make a big difference on some projects. So that is for a single-family residential. We looked at a mixed-use project, in this case, Carbon 31 Oxendales. Here, the fee would be just under $900,000. Comes to about 0.72% of their project cost. On a pure multifamily building, 0.75% of their project cost. Industrial building, 0.43%. And then a hotel, it came to 0.37% of their project cost. So clearly, that would vary as that fee changes over time. It would also vary if there was a mixture of sources. So what would the impacts on development be if the city did have a city SAC fee? Could be a variety of impacts. The best-case scenario would be for a project where the pro forma is penciling out, and they could actually absorb that additional, say, half to 1% of project cost. That could happen in some cases. I don't know how frequent that would be. We don't see pro formas except for projects where there's, you know, city involvement, HRA Airport involvement. But in best-case scenario, the developer could simply absorb the fee. But in many other scenarios, if that pro forma is, you know, right up against what is financially feasible, what would happen in that situation? Well, the developer could try to pass along the cost to a renter or to, if they're selling units, for example. But they could only pass that along if the market would support it, and the market may or may not support those higher rents. So another option they would have would be simply to pursue the project in another city where maybe fees are a little bit lower. And they could certainly seek public resources such as tax increment financing to help fill the gap. A lot of our development today does have some sort of city assistance where there is a gap that's being bridged through various resources. So any cases where there is a gap today, that gap would just widen by the amount of the fee. And then finally, if none of those other options were, they could simply not pursue the project. That would be a worst-case scenario. At this point, I'll turn it back to Scott Anderson.
So speaking a little bit then...
So speaking a little bit then, in terms of impact to ratepayers, as Glenn pointed on one of the earlier slides, there were three scenarios. Somewhat arbitrary, twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five percent ratepayer contributions to a city SAC fee to offset the impact to developers or development projects. They were chosen simply for their roundish nature. But as mentioned earlier, the current sanitary sewer utility funds, operation, maintenance, day-to-day operations, as well as renewal and replacement of existing infrastructure, including that Met Council, that Met Council fee. Rates apply to all customers, so single-family, residential, multifamily, commercial, and industrial. In two thousand and twenty-four, they were, they are five dollars and fifty-one cents per thousand gallons as metered drinking water, with some provisions for residential customers for summertime usage. So your water used outside for gardens and things, you're not billed sewer on that based on wintertime usage and a summertime comparison. And that's handled through billing. Currently, rate increases in our proposed budget model between now and two thousand and thirty-three are projected to be proposed at about seven percent. And that, again, is just for operation and maintenance, as well as that asset renewal. In any of these scenarios, and I'll run through them on the next slide so you can see kind of what the differences are, additional rate increases to account for capacity increases for development, redevelopment would add an additional one and a half to seven percent over the next nine years. And so here are a couple of graphics that demonstrate the different tiers of ratepayer contributions to a SAC fee. That twenty-five percent rate represents, or results in a three-dollar-and-forty-eight cent per month increase by two thousand and thirty-three, just for the capacity improvements compared to the total thirty-one, thirty-one-dollar-a-month increase for everything, or about eleven percent. Conversely, the seventy-five percent ratepayer contribution results in about twenty-six percent of that increase being dedicated to those capacity improvements. Additional funding sources, as Glenn mentioned, tax increment financing, tax, creation of a tax abatement district similar to the Normandale Lake District, assessments to benefiting properties, other grants or federal aid opportunities. And then just real briefly, again, to just highlighting the current state or direction of the wastewater utility. This is output from our capital model or our asset renewal model. The gray bars representing actual infrastructure replacements based for the purposes of the model outside of about two thousand and thirty, based strictly on age. But as we dig into that a little bit deeper, we consider condition and risk, among other things, when we determine actual replacements. That brown line is our budgeted capital improvement plan for making that, those replacements or those renewal techniques. The yellow line above is the resulting condition of the system as a whole, based on that planned CIP investment shown in brown. And the blue line is the resulting condition without that funding component included. And probably would like to see that yellow line trending up a little bit higher than that, but that's, it's a moving target. Again, this slide, you've seen it before, one of our favorites. It's the, it's our, this, and this slide is mismarked. This is just wastewater rate comparison. This is something we show every budget cycle. This is something that we like to use to help guide us in understanding, you know, how affordable our rates are, how competitive we are with surrounding communities. But we also understand in having discussions with the council that this does not tell the whole story. And so we try to look at and utilize other information to understand utility rate affordability. The chart on the left, this is for, this is looking at or comparing water and wastewater rate burden to different income levels. And based on a number of studies, you know, the target we're looking for, for combined water and rate impact on income is somewhere between two and a half to four percent, kind of depending on certain factors. And so you can see, you know, toward the top of that chart, we're looking pretty good. As you move toward the bottom, I think there's, you know, there may be some room for improvement or some things to talk about. The graphic to the right is simply utility rate assessments for two thousand and twenty-two mapped via census tract, just to kind of give you an idea geographically, kind of where you're having utility rate delinquencies. Keep in mind, this is not just water or sewer. This is the entire utility bill, so it's solid waste. It's everything that's included in that utility bill. And with that, I'm passing it back to Glenn.
I can be Glenn. So just to wrap this up real quick, you can understand or you can see the fundamental friction that we are looking at, which is keep development costs low, keep utility rates low. Is there some other option that we can look at? So what we are asking for you guys tonight is to take a look at our proposed next steps, and we would like to field any questions you have. But real quick, June through September will be a community outreach period. That's where we're going to go through co-ed, formally engage with both the development community and the residents of Bloomington. And after that, move into planning commission, city council public hearing, if necessary, draft code amendments, preparation of fees, and then hopefully have a formal amendment to present to you in December. So with that, I think we're happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. Council questions? Councilmember Delisandro.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just, I wanted a quick clarification on the funding. I looked at the CIP here, and it, I have, I see three particular projects that are related to this. One is Penn American Thirty-Five W Sanitary Sewer, twenty-six, twenty-thirty, that's fifteen million dollars. I see one in here called Sewer Main Asset Renewal Replacement Ongoing for nineteen million eight hundred thousand dollars. And then another one, Storm Main Asset Renewal Replacement Ongoing, which may or may not be related, that's twenty-one million dollars. I just, you mentioned forty million dollars. It sounded like that was over and above. I just want to understand how much of that forty million dollars, if any, is already built in? And if so, are these projects the ones we should be looking at?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Delisandro, that forty million dollars is above and beyond what's funded in the CIP? A couple of the projects that you highlighted, the South Town one, for example, that's in the CIP because we know it's upon us, but it's not funded. So it's there as a project, but it's still looking for funding.
Right, okay. That helps a lot. And so just a follow-up then, because it's slated for two thousand and twenty-six, I assume we're going to be having those conversations in imminent terms, at least, on the one that was identified on the map as now, right, in that Penn American area? Is that expectation correct?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Delisandro, maybe. I think that twenty-two thousand and twenty-six was staff's best guesstimate of when it was expected that that project may be needed. But kind of depending on development and redevelopment, depending on funding, I mean, that date will likely move.
Right, okay. The expectation I have usually, and I could be wrong about this, is that when something is in the CIP, that eventually we get some kind of a bonding request or a, you know, we do some kind of debt for these programs. Is that off the table in these particular cases, Mr. Mayor? Because that didn't sound like one of any of the options that we considered here tonight, which was like, just use regular CIP, you know, debt stuff we do, like that. And I didn't hear that tonight, so.
And that's a good question, I think, and might need some further clarification. Because, yeah, I think you're right. I would hope or expect that a lot of these things are in the CIP already at some point. And so what was the plan then?
Okay, yeah. So that would be just something we could, if you guys could bring that back, you know, just in terms of some other stuff you might bring to us, is that, just to understand why you're seeking sources that are not our typical sources? And that could be urgency, I understand, could be just volume, you know, just some levers that we can understand why we wouldn't use the normal CIP process to just kind of move these through. Maybe you have some development projects that are imminent that we would want to get started quicker if we could get this funding faster, right? Those kind of things. I think it'd be good for us to know that. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Be helpful, yep. Councilmember Rivas, and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Rivas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, I know, I'm aware that we, oh, the city has submitted a request to the federal government for ten million dollars, a grant of ten million dollars towards the sewer. Whatever happened to that? If.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Rivas, I think we were, we submitted a request for congressionally-directed spending for a portion of that South Town sewer project in the amount of three million dollars. So those, that process is moving. We, those applications were submitted and accepted, and so now we wait to hear.
What a decision.
Yeah. How it all comes, how it all comes together. We waited a long time last year for that process, but that's okay.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, as I look, I've got several questions here, and I'm not going to ask those now. I'm not going to take us through that at this particular point in time. One of the things that, you know, as I think about this, is, that I'm concerned about, is that we've got this going on, but we've got a number of other items that are also happening. And I just, my fear is that we kind of solve this problem, but then there's these other ones that are out there. And I know that we've had this conversation, you know, we had the town halls and the, and we've had the asset management, you know, conversation a number of years back. And so I'm just, so that's one thing I'm concerned about, is this just, you know, I do definitely want to go down this pathway. I'm not saying I don't want to do this, these next steps, but I don't want to do that, Mayor, in a manner that's in isolation of the other. I want to kind of bring that along. And then one of the things I really like that our finance department does is they have those budget discussions where we kind of come in and have those conversations. And so I would be happy to maybe see if I could get something scheduled so I could come in and ask, you know, a number of these questions that I have here, and other ones I'm going to come up with from those last proceeding things that I had, so that I can have that conversation, you know, with this group. So I'm just wondering if that might be, Mayor, if that's something that, you know, I want to do it, but I don't know if that's helpful at all. But I, there's just too many questions here, and I'm looking at the hour, and I don't want to get into that.
I think it's something to consider through our two thousand and twenty-four process. I think that's a good idea. Lori Economy Schuler, and we'll call her back up and have the, see what she has to say on this as well, if we could.
Mayor and council, in our CIP, we list all the different funding sources or potential funding sources for those projects going in and out years. None of the utility projects generally do we issue debt for in a normal CIP process at all. The utilities raise rates, and they pay as they go, or we place the money in the reserves and build them to pay as we go. But we have not issued debt for utilities. There was one project on Penn, and we had special assessments involved with that one. That was probably about five years ago. Somebody who's in the room that was part of that. But we normally don't issue debt for utility projects. So that's why, part of the funding sources and looking at this.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mayor, just really, if I may, is that because it's not okay to do that, or it's just because we've had these other sources?
Mayor and council, it is okay to issue debt for our utilities, but in normal pieces of that, we would increase our utilities to pay for that debt. And so that's a rate increase on our utilities.
Councilmember Mu.
Thank you, Mayor. One final piece I wanted to understand is what's going on with state legislation. We have the delegation here touring our city, and they're talking about how so many cities like Bloomington were built in the fifties, sixties, and seventies, and were having these infrastructure issues. Is there, I would love to understand what's continued to go on with that, and like what funding the state is providing for that, because I think this falls right in line with what the state's already talking about.
I would agree, Councilmember Mu. And also, the question that I had, or the thought that I had, looking at the constrained areas map that we saw, especially in the Normandale Lake area, which just to the north of 494 is the Pentagon and the Fred Richards area, that's doing the same thing that we're doing in our area, and wondering, there's got to be a way to work, again, regionally, as two cities working together, we're having the same issues. I'm sure that Edina is looking at exactly the same thing. And is there a creative way to approach this in some of those cases? And for that matter, perhaps with Richfield on the other end of 494. So just a thought to consider. Well, this is kind of sobering numbers late in the evening, but I appreciate it, because it's good information to have, and it's good to know that we've got you working on it and considering different things that we're moving forward. I like your process of outreach and engagement. Let's continue this discussion and see where we are as we get more into our budget schedule, and as we get into December, and we start setting those utility fees, if that's the way we're going, so. Council, I'm going to keep us moving along, if that's okay. I will do that. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Item five point three on our agenda, last but certainly not least, before we get to the council policy and issue update, pro forma analysis of the Rosa development. And I see Jason Schmidt from Port, the Port Authority, Mike Centenario from Planning, and I see our applicants in the audience. Everybody, thank you for your patience, and thanks for sticking it out with us as we get late into the night here. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. When we have a. Thank you, thank you. We'll get the PowerPoint up momentarily. So thank you. The, this is item five point three, that must be one of my edits, for Rosa Development Proform Analysis and Phase One Construction Start. So we'll detail just a couple of elements that we're really talking about, because it is a very, some of the language is very technical, and I think it's easy to get confused on some of the development milestones that we'll talk about. So to refresh the council's memory, Rosa Development Phase One, that's the development that we're discussing tonight, is for a six-story, one hundred eighty-three-unit apartment building. And rendering is on the screen here, and that was approved back in April of two thousand and twenty. And so the, there's a very, there's a very direct relationship between Rosa Development, a variety of future phases of development, and they're tied to interim use permits that were issued for Park and Fly Remote Airport Parking. The whole idea is, we understand that this is a very large site. Redevelopment is not going to happen at once. It's going to take, it's going to be in phases. So what we try to do is tie interim use permit approvals to moving forward with permanent development, and call those development milestones. So the most recent IUP was approved in two thousand and twenty-two, and was also subject to some of these development milestones that I mentioned. In the approval from two thousand and twenty-two, there was a lot of discussion at the planning commission, and ultimately, the language that was adopted is before you. This is the development milestone that we're really here to talk about tonight, and it's highlighted. And it really, we've heard the term pro forma quite a bit tonight, and that's what we're discussing. And so ultimately, what we're asking the council to do is to make a determination if the pro forma is at market conditions, and if returns are insufficient. And if that determination is made, there is language in this IUP approval that allows the Phase One construction start to be continued a year. Currently, the milestone is that the Phase One, that six-story, one hundred eighty-three-unit building, would start construction in a little over a month. And certainly, the applicant who's here tonight isn't prepared to do that, because they believe that the pro forma is, has insufficient returns. And that I will turn it over to Mr. Schmidt for a few minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. Jason Schmidt, the Assistant Port Authority Administrator. And as Senior Planner Centenario just stated, one of the major conditions of that IUP And as Senior Planner Centenario just stated, one of the major conditions of that IUP is for the City Council to determine if the pro forma is meeting market conditions. With regards to the Port Authority staff, it is our, our mission or one of our duties to review performas and bring analysis before the City Council and the Port Authority Commission with regards to if there is any financial assistance requested within these projects. And so what staff did is we worked with Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor, in reviewing the submitted pro forma that we received in February of this year. And so this pro forma was based on that 183-unit apartment project that was proposed back in 2020. And so based on staff's analysis and review of that pro forma, we were to determine that pretty much everything within that pro forma was within the market ranges that we are seeing for Class A apartment projects. So this project, so I just want to highlight kind of the affordability in this project as well. This project, as stated, was 183 units. 20% of those units are going to be affordable at the 50% AMI level. That's 37 units. Looking at it, the overall development cost of this development was $54 million, just shy of $300,000 per unit. With our review of previous developments that we have worked on, as well as with Baker Tilly, who reviews a number of development projects throughout the metro as, as well as the state, that is within the, the typical market range that they are seeing and what we are seeing for Class A apartment projects. Looking at it, we looked at their sources and sources of the project. Debt financing, they were coming in at 60%. They were going to secure 60% of their, their project via a loan, and it was requiring 40% of equity upfront. Speaking with current developers as well, within the market, as well as with Baker Tilly, that is what we are seeing in the market today. Back in 2020, it was a little bit different. You didn't need to bring as much equity to the table. Where we are today, it's right around that 40%. Additionally, what we did in the analysis is we looked at what was the financial assistance the Port Authority was looking to give at that time back in 2020. Since that time, that development agreement has lapsed, so any additional financial assistance would need to go back for approval. But what we did is we analyzed it as to if the Port Authority was still willing to give them an $825,000 grant of TIF assistance, as well as looking to give them a Pago note in the previous round, how does that impact this analysis? And so overall, what we can say is that prior to any financial assistance, this project didn't even meet a debt coverage, coverage ratio of 1.0. So most likely, they weren't even going to be able to get a loan because there wouldn't have been enough, enough cash flow to cover a debt service. Additionally, by looking at that, the rate of return was well below a 6% cash-on-cash return. Then what we did is we analyzed it with that additional financial assistance from the previous approval back in 2020 of that $825,000 grant from the Port Authority, as well as a Pago housing TIF. With that assistance, the debt coverage ratio did increase above a 1.0. So most likely, they would be able to secure financing. However, when we looked at it and analyzed it further, it did increase the rate of return. However, it did not meet that, that minimum of 6% rate of return, which was part of the condition of that IUP. And I will state, it is a 6% rate of return. What we are seeing within the market range of, of other projects within the area that Baker Tilly has analyzed, they have stated a number of developers are seeking a 7% or 8% return. And so this is a lower return mechanism that this developer was seeking or was approved with that IUP. They're still not meeting that 6%. And so based on this analysis, it is staff's interpretation, as well as our municipal advisor Baker Tilly's, that this project, based on the pro forma we have received, with regards to the development that Mr. Centenario had stated previously, is not meeting that requirement. And we agree that, that this project probably is not meeting that condition. We did do some sensitivity analysis with Baker Tilly in reviewing it as far as what could be done. A major thing that could be done is if they could try to value engineer $11 million out of the project. However, when you do that, you have a lot of strings that movement. As soon as you bring out amenities, that then impacts the, the rents that they can, can support and what the market can, can warrant. I should state that the developer did use Max, excuse me, Maxfield analyst to do a rent study, and we, staff did review that rent study and we agreed with that analysis as far as what were the market rents that they could obtain within this area. And so with that, that is overall my staff report and my review of the pro forma, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Is there anything additional you want to say?
Nope.
Before, there's a question for Mr. Schmidt, it, it's worth noting, the Planning Commission on May 9th, we brought this before them as well. On a 5 to 1 vote, they did not make the determination that the pro forma is at market conditions and returns are, returns are sufficient. The one point that commissioners focused on was the fact that this development, this Phase One development is no longer a valid final development plan approval. There are certain time constraints or timelines when developments can be constructed and approvals expire. So while we understand that perspective, we still are maintaining our recommendation that makes this determination that returns are not sufficient for a number of reasons. I have those on the screen, but I'll just identify them quickly. First off, final development plan for this Phase One development was valid when they submitted to the city for review. You know, even though the, the approval has expired, we don't see any major changes to the site or haven't been able to identify any major changes to the site or to city code with the, with the idea that this would, should be a fairly straightforward reapproval. Further, having a valid, found development plan approval is, is not outlined in the IUP development milestones that we've talked about. And frankly, it really isn't relevant for pro forma reviews, given that it's, every development has a pro forma that's prepared and reviewed before we even see an application in city staff. That, that's part of the process that generally the city is not, not a part of. So we do have two recommendations for you tonight, two options. One is staff's recommendation, and it, it's, it's a mouthful, I admit. And then the, the second recommendation is based off of what the Planning Commission, the recommendation that they made. And so we're happy to answer questions.
Before we get to your questions, Ms. Manderschad, could you give us the, the legal breakdown on all of this?
So Mayor members, this is, this is dense, right? So I thought it might be helpful to maybe give the very high-level summary of, of the levers that are happening here. So they have an IUP, the property has, there's an IUP on the property. An IUP is a, is intended to be a temporary permission to use land in certain ways and they have to meet these milestones. And the analysis that's currently in place is whether the pro forma is meeting the market conditions, whether the returns are sufficient. The Port Authority, with our Baker Tilly advisor, did the analysis of what the, what the property owner submitted, concluded it does not, it does not, the returns are insufficient. Essentially, the milestone is not met and therefore it could be extended an additional year. That recommendation was brought to, correct? I'm still, okay, thanks. That recommendation was brought to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did, did not agree. Had they agreed with staff, it would have gone on consent. But because there wasn't agreement, it's on organizational business. So that is why we're here, having a long format discussion tonight. But based on my understanding, staff reviewed all the materials submitted by the owner and agreed with, with the owner's position that the current, their current ability to develop the property right now and move away from the park-and-fly land use is not possible. It's not sustainable under any market conditions right now. So that's why we're here tonight and seeking to consider the staff recommendation and make you aware of the Planning Commission's position. And then the applicant is here, if there's any desire to, or the property owner, I should say, is here if there's any desire to clarify any points that staff made or, or that I said.
Thank you, Ms. Manderschad. Council, questions of, of any of our three presenters so far? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question on the legal. We're bound by that, that if we find, that we have to make a finding of if we believe it's market feasible or not, and if we say that it's not, they automatically get the one-year extension, we, that's.
Mayor members, that's essentially what's going on here. The motion that's before you with the staff recommendation here, that's the long format here, is keying off of the IUP milestone for Phase One construction start.
Okay.
Go back to that, if that's helpful.
And so, and then the second question I have, if I might, is the market feasibility, you know, I think that the concern or the struggle I have that maybe you can help me figure out is the Arter, I believe, is being built currently directly across the street. BCS just finished Phase Four and is working through the process to start Phase Five, just down the street from this location. We had 700 American on our agenda today and they told us that they're getting ready to start, that this was the final piece of the financing and they're ready to start. It's four projects within a very short range of this one that all tell me it's market feasible to build housing in Bloomington in that area. How, how, how could I, how can I see it differently, I guess? What, what are the factors that I'm missing there that, that leads to the conclusion that it's not feasible when other people are doing it?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, councilmember, councilmember Nelson, to give you an overview, I, we, staff has not reviewed the Arter because that was a market rate project with regards to the pro forma. However, I did speak with someone earlier today, just actually, it was a cold call asking for some additional information from the city, who was an advisor, working on that project with regards to their runs. What they were, what I've been advised and told is that the developer there was able to, to get and prove higher rents with regards to being on the bluff. So the bluff views and the bluff rents are above the market rate rents that both Rosa is, is projecting based on their analysis, as well as what BCS, all the projects from the Fenley, Carbon 31, and Indigo are able to, to get with regards to market rate. That's one of the reasons why that project was able to move forward outside of any financial assistance. In addition, the same thing with the Riser. The Riser is just to the south, that's a senior project on the bluff that had just opened up earlier this year, same thing, that moved forward with a 9% affordability. With regards to BCS, the Carbon 31, that one just opened. However, that one closed on financing about a year and a half, two years ago. So different financing structure, interest rates were a little bit lower. Additionally, that project is only doing 9% of the units at 60% AMI and was able to utilize an existing economic, or economic redevelopment TIF district. So they were able to, to, to get a different financing with regards to how this structure would be with regards to Rosa. 700 American, another project that you had just stated as well, once again, as Ms. Economy Schuler had stated, that project has a number of financial sources to get that project through the finish line, one of them being the, the bonds that were approved tonight from the state. And so those are, are a low interest, lower interest than what Rose, or, excuse me, what Rosa is able to get on the market for a market rate project. Additionally, we were able to land right down on that project. We were able to do a number of grants for that project to help move that forward. And so that is what we are seeing, talking with other economic advisors, housing developers within the metro area. The projects that are moving forward right now are pretty much 100% affordable projects. We're currently trying to close on a couple other projects that are not 100% affordable. Those developers, what I can speak publicly is that they're having a hard time right now trying to get the equity in those deals, as well as to get the private financing. And so everything is a little bit different. Unfortunately, the timing of this, you know, is kind of what stalled this out. This project was ready to go in 2020. I still remember the day when the developer called me up and informed me that they were unable to get a GMP, the gross maximum price from their builder. They were ready to go, but for that, the lack of that GMP, and because of that added risk, the developer did not move forward at that time.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. So what I wanted, and just what I'm trying to figure out in my mind as, as I look at this, is that it's been presented to me in terms of that feasibility, and I, I am very familiar with IUP and, and some of the motivations behind that. But I wanted to just understand, so Baker Tilly has come back and they have done an analysis of this particular pro forma. And, and they have made a, a determination based on evidence with respect to this particular pro forma, that it's insufficient. Is, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, councilmember Loman, that is correct. We reviewed the pro forma that was submitted, working with Baker Tilly, staff did, did the analysis. We made sure that everything was within market ranges. And then from there, based on the pro forma that was submitted for this project, this 183-unit project, the design that was approved back in 2020 currently does not meet market or meet the return based on market condition.
Could you just talk a little bit about Baker Tilly's, you know, their background and, and why they may have some expertise in that particular area? I mean, you talk a little bit about that.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, councilmember, councilmember Loman. So Baker Tilly is our municipal advisor. They do, they step in for a number of smaller communities with regards to analysis on performas, as well as any financial assistance that governments are looking to give private entities. And so they have, they have the knowledge and expertise on staff that deals with this every day. Port staff has utilized Baker Tilly in the past just to, as we are reviewing analysis and performas in-house, to make sure that we are still within market ranges. And so they are our go-to municipal advisor that we have partnered with. And so Ellers is another one as well.
Okay, so just two other questions, and I, I think I get your point there, I just, I'm trying to get, get to understanding. So with the Planning Commission, they have made a recommendation that is to, not to that effect. What, I, I'm not clear what the evidence is that they're bringing forward that's saying that this is not sufficient. Are they, do they have a market study or a market analysis that they're, they're doing that, that's bringing that back?
Ms., Ms. Okay.
Mayor, councilmembers, so with, with regards to the Planning Commission action, the, you know, it's difficult to summarize an extended discussion on the, on this item, but the, the one, the one item that they focused on was that if this project can't get a building permit right now, then it's not a feasible project. So it was, it was not addressing the return question directly. It was essentially using the fact that it's not a viable project from a approval standpoint.
I get that.
So ultimately, they, they just could not make the finding that, or they, they found that the returns were sufficient and want construction to, to stick to the development milestone as it sits today.
Okay, thank you. I'm pretty clear in my mind what I need to do, thank you.
Councilmember Mu and then councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is, if we approve the staff recommendation, this allows the developer extra time to get the equity, whatever they need to get, where they need to go. If we don't, what happens to that? So if we follow what the Planning Commission does, is, is it just gone? Do we have to go back to the drawing board? Like where, where are we at?
Sure, Mayor, councilmembers. So if you follow the Planning Commission's recommendation, the development milestone would remain as it is on the screen, where Phase One construction start is supposed to begin June 30th of this year. But the reality is that that's not going to happen, given a, a number of factors. So ultimately, then the city has to consider enforcement action due to a delinquency in the approved development milestones. Certainly, we try to work with the applicant to correct that, but, you know, the likelihood is that they would be in violation of their IUP. They went through the process to try and maintain compliance.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quick question. What, what is the, what is the value to doing this on like a year-by-year basis as opposed to saying, you know, hey, just go ahead and have it as a parking lot for our next five years and come back to us with a new plan? Like what's the, what would be the reason why that wouldn't be on the table? Like what's the, what would be the reason why that wouldn't be on the table as, and to just continue to do this continuance thing? Thanks.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmembers, you know, one reality is these parking lots have been operating under temporary or interim approvals for thirty-five plus years. And at what point, what's temporary or what's interim? And, you know, this is the most, in, in some ways, the, where we expect and want the most intense development, transit-oriented development, and a remote airport parking lot is not in line with the vision of the South Loop District in any way. And so, you know, at some point, what is the right timing? Well, for the last thirty-five years, it's, it's been extended, 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 and I suspect that would just continue. And so the, this whole idea of developed milestones, trying to get phased development, was to try and change that reality and start to see permanent development on these sites. So, but to answer the question directly, the city could continue to issue these temporary approvals.
Councilmember Rivas?
So is there any benefit to deny it to the city if nothing is going to happen there anyway?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, difficult question, answer. It really is, you know, you have to make the decision that you feel is appropriate under these circumstances.
That's my point though, is what is the benefit if we give it another year? Or if we just say no to it, what is the benefit either way to the city itself?
Well, I think that the benefit to the city, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, is it gives the applicant some more time to hopefully, maybe they do go through that value engineering effort to try and bring it into a, a level that is feasible. And it's always better to not have to take enforcement action. It's not something we, we like to do or want to do. We try to work with folks without having to send them, you know, essentially threats to fine them or, or some other action.
If I may follow up on that, I mean, but your, your recommendation is to not approve that one year, right? Am I getting that wrong?
Mayor, Councilmembers, staff's recommendation is to extend the development milestone a year.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Manderscheid.
Mayor members, just to, want to just make sure the council understands that the applicant has been very, very much in communication over the time period and, and working with staff and trying to meet the development milestones. And when they're concerned that that's not maybe going to be possible, they have reached out to the city. So given that the one-year extension was contemplated in the original document, it's, the staff's recommendation is entirely consistent with the language of the original approval from 2022.
Well, I, I will say, counsel, I'm of, both minds on this. First of all, I, I, when I don't understand something, I rely on the experts in the room, and that would, that's not me. I mean, I, I, I understand, but I cannot effectively look at a pro forma and make a determination whether or not something is, is viable or not. So to hear from staff and to hear from Baker Tilly carries a lot of weight with me that this is, that it's not possible to move forward with this. And so that, that does carry a lot of weight. On the other hand, I, I remember when we made this first, we, we started making these accommodations, I mean, if this is thirty-six years, I've been around since year twenty-two or whatever, and continue to see this as a surface parking lot, which I know makes money and it's a viable business. But to staff's point, it's also, it's, it's prime development opportunities, and it's not the highest and best use in my mind of that, of that piece of, of land in the city of Bloomington. I, I don't want to get into a back and forth. I don't want to get into the possibility of, you know, litigation of some kind or, you know, angry letters going back and forth. But as I said, I also don't want to push into a, a fourth decade of this. And so, I mean, I, I can see and understand where we could benefit from an additional year, but boy, I just don't, I, I just, how do we, how do we make sure it, it ultimately happens? And I, and I can't answer that question. I'm not sure how we make sure this ultimately moves forward in a way that we want it to. Councilmember Lowman?
You know, I think you, you hit the square on, on, on the money, and I, I just, you know, there's always this motivation, you know, with that parking lot being there to, to, to make money and not, not get this thing done. Although, again, I'm not going to, the pro forma, so I, I wonder if we go into this next year, but then maybe we ought to, and I don't even know if it's even legal, but, you know, look to kind of curtail that, that moneymaker. And maybe that might motivate to get something done more quicker. But, but I, I can't see at this late hour, at this, you know, you know, at this stage doing anything other than, honestly, because I, I mean, gosh, I'd hate to say no and then, wow, this thing blows up on us, you know?
And, and as I said, I mean, I, I respect Baker Tilly, I respect staff, and I respect the analysis they bring forward with this. And, and given, given the way that I can view a pro forma, I'm not, I'm not able to say, you know, I'm not able to poke holes in a pro forma and say, nope, they're wrong. Baker Tilly is wrong, and I'd be more correct in this, so.
Well, Mayor, if, if that is the way you're leaning, I'm willing to make this motion that's in front of me right now and see where we're at so we can move this along. So now we, we're getting close on time here.
And I, I think, I mean, understanding that this is a, is a one-year extension, an annual extension, I'm comfortable with that and hope that we get a different answer this time next year. I hope we're coming up out of the ground this time next year. So, Councilmember Lowman?
What's your guess?
Is there any way that we can say one more year, but then at the end of the year, we vote on it? If nothing is moving forward, we just can eliminate it? I mean, add an addendum to whatever is being written already, has been written. I mean, to, to, to state that in a year, if we are in the same situation, then we can vote no on it and move on.
Mayor, I might, I might suggest that I think that the staff has heard our concern and what you've kind of brought forward, and if you're okay with it, and if you think it's appropriate, Mayor, they've heard it, and we can move this forward with that, with that in mind.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, it's my understanding, and staff should feel free to correct me otherwise, but once, if we get, if we're back at month eleven, we're going to be back here in the future because we'll then be at a next expiration date. So this won't be the, if they don't take action to move forward, this will be back. It won't be the last time the council will have the opportunity to talk about this. And frankly, who knows what's going to happen in, in the, in the market? Who knows what's going to happen in the economy? I mean, lots of stuff can change, right? So I think that the document as drafted in 2022 set up, see my word at ten forty-eight, but contemplated a one-year extension if, if things were not penciling out, and it appears that that's what was presented and concluded. So that's, I believe, why the staff is making the recommendation that it is.
Thank you. So to your, your comment, Councilmember Rivas, I, I think Ms. Manderscheid is correct that it's, we're, we're not going to come down to, if we come down to it at the eleventh month again next year, this time next year, it's, it's not going to happen. And so I, I think we can, we can safely say that if we get to the, as staff works through this, as we get to the, the five, the six-month period, we will know one way or another, and then perhaps continue to work with staff, continue to work with the, the owner, and try and figure out a path forward, as opposed to tonight at this late hour, trying to put a, a definite cutoff one way or another, I think makes more sense.
Mr. Mayor, just one, a bit of additional context. This is under an, an existing IUP, and that IUP expires August of 2027. So whether we're here a year from now, you will, you will still have additional chances to consider future interuse permits. And, you know, again, if we haven't seen anything happen, that 2027 day is going to come up, and you have, you'll be asked to make findings whether or not to continue an IUP.
That's good context. Thank you very much. Councilmember Nelson?
You just answered my question about what we'd actually be looking at next year when that IUP would be up, so that, that works for me.
So Mayor, having reviewed the applicant's updated Phase One pro forma, the staff report, memorandum of port authority staff and supporting documents to make a determination that application's updated Phase One pro forma is at market conditions and returns are insufficient as defined in the development milestone attached to the city's decision notice dated August twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and that the Phase One pro forma milestone date extended to, ooh, you moved it on me there. You mean I got to grab it out of here? All right. Okay, we'll see what I can do. You used to do that when I was a young council member. And that was a Phase One pro forma milestone date extended to February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and the Phase One construction start milestone be extended to the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to accept the staff recommendation as stated on item five point three this evening. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right, counsel, our last item of the evening is item five point four, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. I'll start very quickly with a review of our listening session this evening. I think we set a record for most speakers at the listening sessions. I think that was the most we've ever had. We had six people speak. Sally Ness continued the discussion about the use of Smith Park. Pam Palmer was there and talked about the fiber optics work being done around the city and some of the impacts of it, and what could be done to, to maintain quality control about the work that is underway right now. And then we had a series of speakers who all had opinions regarding the proposed stadiums at Kennedy and Jefferson. Catherine Babcock, Terry Delahay, Craig Hoff, and Sean Lawler all spoke regarding the stadium proposals. And I think we, we made it clear that it will come before the City Council on, at our June, June third meeting, I think, a review of the environmental impact or a proposal regarding the environmental impact. Our, our statement was that frankly, that being that far out and with a holiday in between, we have not seen any information as a City Council on this, and we'll wait for the staff report, and we'll certainly look forward to that conversation that we're going to be having in early June about this, and we'll be moving forward on all of this and, and bringing the conversation forward at that time. So it was a good discussion. And like I said, we had six people, and somehow we managed to get everybody into a half hour. I'm not sure how. Oh, I, I'm sorry, Ms. Councilmember Carter, is something related?
So just for, I'm sure there are a lot of people listening right now, so just for the public's awareness. June sixth is also going to the Planning Commission, I believe. I'm looking at you. June sixth, and is that going to be a public hearing?
Mayor Boosie, Councilmember Carter, that's correct. June sixth is a scheduled public hearing. Depending on what the council does on June third, that June sixth meeting may need to be extended. For example, if the council agreed with the petition that a EAW was required, then that EAW would need to be completed before the Planning Commission takes formal action. But we do have a, a meeting scheduled for June sixth.
Would people still be able to testify in that meeting or provide public comment? Or would they, would it just be pushed off in general until a future date?
Mayor Boosie, Councilmember Carter, if it goes forward, there would be a public hearing. If the guidance is to prepare an EAW, then there would not. It would be continued indefinitely.
Thank you for clarifying that.
All right. So Elizabeth Tolsman was our Assistant City Manager, was our Acting City Manager tonight. Thank you very much for keeping us on track and getting us out of here with good six minutes to spare, so greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, three quick updates. One, just to give you a heads up, due to potential rain and thunderstorms that's going to happen tomorrow evening, and in the interest of safety for our staff and community, we are going to be postponing the Nine Mile Creek Corridor Celebration that was scheduled to be at Moira Park from four to six. We will keep you posted on the details of the reschedule, and we will get this out to our communication channels as well as to our residents and social media by tomorrow morning, as well as our website on BloomingtonForward.org. And then I just want to give you a quick legislative update. Obviously, session ended late last night, and so just three quick highlights. We were successful in working with our delegation to get a technical correction to last year's bonding allocation for replacement of the public health building, to use those funds for construction, not just planning and pre-design work as originally passed. So that was good, that update there. Second, we, while we were successful in getting both the House and Senate Bonding Bill this year for the Normandale Trail Project, just a quick data point, we had requested four point five million, and we were in the bill for four million. Considering many other cities do not even have the request, getting an agreed-upon bill, that is very encouraging. Unfortunately, the legislature cannot agree on a bonding bill, and nothing passed. So we will continue to pursue bonding requests in the upcoming session. And then lastly, issues related to missing middle housing legislation and other proposals that would have preempted city planning and zoning controls did not pass this year, and cities will continue to work with the legislature before next session to try and find a compromise. We'll have a more thorough summary of what legislation did pass in upcoming meetings and council communications, so stay posted on that. We'll have a more formal update there. And the very last update is part of the Internal Services Team. We're working to ensure that, you know, sitting in council meetings, we hear a lot of questions around communication, community engagement, equity impacts. I know we work closely with Public Works and Parks and Rec and Community Development on those areas. With this new reorg and restructure, I'm going to bring our teams together, particularly under my area on IS Communications, HR, our City Clerk, Office of Ratio Equity and Belonging, coed, and our new Strategy, Information, and Performance to ensure that we bring those impacts up so that before policy items comes before you, you know that we have assessed that in advance. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Tolsman? Councilmember Nelson, a question or?
Question, yeah.
Please.
I'm just wondering if on the environmental worksheet, if we can get information on that before the council packet, if we could get that as soon as possible, copy of the, everything we have, just so we have more time to review that, that would be very much appreciated.
And, and this regarding the, the proposed stadiums, is that what we're saying? Yes. Okay, regarding the proposed stadiums, if we could, so, yep. Counsel, anything else to add or any other additional questions? Councilmember Mua?
One thing I would just like to add is I would be happy to make another impassioned plea to get on the Bonding Bill next year because I think that was helpful to get the Normandale Project on the list anyways. So happy to do that.
Absolutely. Anything else, counsel? Hearing nothing else from counsel, we have completed our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening. Motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thanks much for the council discussion tonight. Well done. Thank you to the members of the community who were here and bringing their perspectives forward. Thanks to everybody watching at home. Thank you to staff for your good work. Everybody, stay safe tomorrow if the weather turns. Thanks much for being here this evening. Thanks.
You're in the system. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.